Wonderful person. Mr. Holloway, would you lead us in the pledge, please? That all? Okay, so somebody who isn't so wonderful? Okay. I'm sorry.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilman Thomas is going to lead us in prayer.
Shall we bow? Father, we thank you for the great men and women that make up this great community. We thank you for the sacrifices that each home and person that makes to this community to make it great, to make it what you've called it to become. Thank you for the men and women that serve on this council. Father God, give us wisdom and insight on how to judge and to hear your word throughout all of the demands that are made upon this city. Continue to make this city great, continue to make this community great. And thank you for those that protect us and respond to the very needs of this community. We ask it all. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Okay, the city attorneys report, please.
In closed session, we talked about Cohen case. I gave a status report. No action was taken. We talked about potential litigation involving the formation of the groundwater sustainability agency. No action was taken. We talked about a third case that wasn't identified in the agenda, but as it developed, it should have been, we discovered it should have been identified, and that's litigation against Southern California Edison to relocate some power poles. The report in that case was that the city attorney was authorized to attempt to secure Silcal Edison's agreement to relocate the poles and failing that, file a lawsuit.
That's it? Okay. Thank you, sir. Public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment session section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Sir?
Good evening. Stan Rattorah. On July 6th, the city raised the sewer fees. Prior to that meeting, I had requested an updated copy of the sewer fees from the city. I didn't receive them before the meeting, and since then, I've actually asked for them probably two or three additional times. At least once, I was promised that I would receive them. I still have not received them. I would appreciate getting those. Second item is at the July 20th meeting, I suggested that if the city needed additional wastewater revenue, that they contact the Navy. I stated that historically, the city has been paying about 91% of all of the revenue, or generating 91% of the revenue, and the Navy has been generating less than 9% of the revenue. The city manager questioned my data, my statistics, and indicated that he would go and have the city do their own analysis, which quite frankly, I encourage. I think it's important the city does do that. I was curious, has there been any progress made on that analysis?
Not at this time.
No? Okay. Anyway, I do encourage you to continue looking into that, or to start looking into it, I Also, at the July 20th city council meeting, I requested the city to perform a new wastewater facility rate study. Now, it didn't show up on either of the city committees meetings that I attended, and it isn't on this agenda tonight. Just one data point I'd like to put by you is that the 2013 rate study assumed that the bond would be for $50 million at a 6% interest rate. Now, since then, we've learned that a 2.26% interest rate is a more reasonable interest rate to actually assume, and that amounts to, over a period of 30 years, to be $39 million over the course of the entire loan being paid back, or that amounts to $1.3 million per year. That's a lot of money. So, once again, I'm requesting that the city perform a new waste rate study for the wastewater facility.
Although, I think, Dr. Rattorah, when you made that request, I asked you if it was okay if we did a study rather than a full-blown rate study. Could we look at it doing an analysis? And you agreed. Is that correct?
You and I did talk about that, and as far as I'm concerned, it's the analysis, the rates that, we don't have to have a Prop. 218 hearing.
Right.
That is a separate and distinct issue, only if it's determined that the rate study shows that it's clearly appropriate, which you have a Prop. 218 hearing. So, I'm not hung up on the Prop. 218 hearing. I want to make sure that the numbers that we're using are reasonable.
Agreed. And you may not have seen, but Mr. Spear nodded his head when he's, when you said you wanted that information, the first request.
Okay. Real good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Holly Besser, and, my name is Holly Besser, and I'm one of the people here tonight representing the Rose Garden. They're trying to illegally evict us, and there's quite a bunch of us who do live at the Rose Garden who are low income, and we're almost all like family there. I mean, so, we're trying to figure out what we can do to stop them from illegally evicting us. They've had, they put papers on the door on the 15th of last month, trying to push us out on the 31st. There's elderly people living there, disabled people living there, families with kids, pets, and they, they think because we're low income, and they consider us trash, that they're going to just throw us all out on the streets. So, we're trying to get it on the agenda to save the Rose Garden, or at least show, do something so to save a lot of people from being homeless.
Well, Kelly, I can, I can assure you that none of us want to see homeless people in the streets any more than you all want to be in the streets. And I would like to ask our council, if there's some options, some authority, what can we do?
Well, generally, that's a private matter between the owner of the property and the tenant. We'd be happy to look at that, just to make sure there are no city laws being violated. Can report back to you.
Okay. I'm not sure what private help you can seek also, because there is a lot of organizations that, I think of when we had the fire, when we had the fire, when the fire happened over at the lake, this whole community stood up and said, "We're willing to help." I think this is an opportunity for us to, to, to look at that and see what we can do. And I see the chief is here, so obviously, he has something he'd like to say also.
Yeah, I can assist them to see if there's any county or state resources out there that they can, I can meet with them to see if there's any county or city resources out there that they can, you know, inquire with to deal with the situation.
Your, your mic is not real, though. Talk louder.
If you meet with me out there, I'll see if I can find somebody that works with the county or state that might be able to look at your case. There are advocacy groups out there, Oms Budsmann, that can help you in this matter, at least provide you assistance.
I appreciate that.
Or at least an answer whether or not what they're doing is appropriate or not.
Because there's, there, we have Ally. She has two kids. Kelly, she has two kids.
A lot of us have kids. I'm just worried.
Please come up to the microphone, because they can't hear you on the TV.
A lot of us have kids, and so, we're just really worried about what's going to be going on, because...
If you meet with, on the hallway, I'll get an appointment with you tomorrow, and I'll see if I can find a resource for you guys to talk to. Right now, as far as I know, there's no city ordinances that address us.
Okay.
But I'll see if I can find a resource for you to call.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Thank you, chief.
I'm also here to speak on the Rose Garden. I'm one of the tenants there. I've been forced to move by selling buildings, five or six times now in 15 years. And the one previous, they stole my furniture. They lied against my daughter. They had her arrested instead of going into court. They lied against her. They gained my furniture because I had no means to move it at that point in time. They said that they sold the building, but I looked into public records. They didn't sell that building until two months after, and then she signed it over to her own daughter. She lied and had my daughter arrested and gained properties of furniture and stuff from me. So, I'm going back to small claims against them. I filed small claims from where I'm at. They've already been served at the Rose Garden. They, I've been there 13 months. I live low income, $11.27 a month for Social Security. I'm not somebody who's just laying around Social Security. I worked for years. I worked 16 hours a day for years. My daughter is unemployed after 20 years working 21st Century over at Woodland Hills. They've cut her unemployment. She's home with me with just food stamps at the age of 45. I'm supporting her as a widow. I'm 62 years old on Social Security now. In May, Jesse, the manager, said that we were all going to have to move. He called to bill at the meeting. Everybody went out there. He said we would have 60 to 90 days to move. I went right over to the ridge, applied for an apartment, was accepted, and the last part of May, I go over to Jesse and said, "I have an apartment. It'll take me a little while, but I'm going to move." Right? Jesse then said to me, "Oh, they didn't sell the building. We're not moving." Since I'm low income, the cost of getting together money to move, I said, "Well, I'm going to stay then. I'm not going to move." I took out credit on my own air conditioner, because the one in my window was froze over last summer, and they wouldn't replace it. And I thought, "Well, I'd rather replace my own air conditioner than the sitting heat." In June, he said we were staying. I paid all my rent all along. I have receipts. I paid through the bank. I paid money order for July. Other people said they gained rents and kept it for themselves. I don't know. I know how I paid my rents. In July, I went up to get mail. Jesse was out front. The police were out front. I went to get mail, and they go, "Gwen, what do you want?" And I go, "My mail." And they go, they said to us, "Go back to your room and wait. We're busy out here. We don't want you involved in what we're doing." Right? So, I walked back to my room. I telephoned Jesse two or three hours after, and he goes, "Do you know what was happening out there?" I go, "No." He goes, "The bank took over the building. They tried to change the locks on the door, change management. Dan Whittaker and Aubrey came in as management." And I asked him, "Are we staying, like you said all along since the end of May?" He goes, "Yes, you're staying." July 3rd rent was paid in money order to them. Three weeks, not, not three weeks later, on the 10th of the month, he knocked on my door loud and rudely, and he said, "They're tearing the building down. You have three weeks to be out. That's not enough money and funding to be out of place low income with no notice like that." The ridge sent me a letter saying that I was off of their waiting list because I decided to stay because they said we were staying. But I reapplied to the ridge. They reinstated me. I'm moving over there tomorrow, but I'm filing small claims for my costs, for the things they put me through. My, my relative moved from Arizona with my grandchildren. They rented a room by Jesse. When they went up to the room, they had bedbugs. And they knew they had bedbugs in those rooms before they put my grandchildren with my mother of them up in that room. They knew not to place them there with bedbugs. They paid the room. They moved them to another room, and I went asking, "Why aren't you bringing bedbug spray or anything? Why aren't you trying to get rid of the bedbugs?" Right? They said it wasn't their responsibility. But do you rent a room in a motel and lay in bedbugs?
Well, let me...
After paying your rent for the night?
Let me ask. I, you have an awful story. I can certainly understand your concern and where you go. At this point in time, have, have you talked to the chief then at all? And I promise you, we're going to look and see if we can find any solutions from our end, and I'm not sure what we can do for you right now.
I'm looking for small claims for what I've been through.
Okay. Well, that would be something that wouldn't be in our jurisdiction, so...
I, I looked up public records. It shows that people over at Oxnard own the building. If you go into public records, she'll say, if it's sold, it won't show it in records yet.
Okay. Well, there is your five minutes. I promise you, we will all look for help, because we don't want you out in the street any more than you want to be.
Even the help department wouldn't help with bedbug spray, not that, or nothing. They wouldn't. They said they only have the budget for vaccinations for children.
Okay.
I bought the bedbug spray. I have the receipts for it.
Okay. Thank you very much. We wish you the best. Mr. Porter.
Mr., my name's Ronald Porter. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tonight is really more, what I want to discuss is more the progress and where we're going in this country and with this council, because people continue to come up to me and claim that we're a democracy. We're not a democracy. We're a republic. And the reason I bring it to your attention is that republic was formed for two basic reasons. One is the primary reason of the electors, of electorate, is to protect the individual rights and only use that power given to them by the people. The secondary reason that we do this is because we elect people such as yourself to stand up and represent, because everyone knows a government can't function if everyone has to vote on every item. But it's also part of that responsibility to not try and move social justice or social issues through that office. And I just ask that, that you look at and say, we need to really look and say, "This is what we're doing. This is what we're representing." We, we want to understand that our primary duty is to protect the individual. We don't want mobocracy. When you, when you get a group together and says, "Well, we have this group. We want to have it." Well, it doesn't matter. What is the individual? What is the basic thing? What would your, would you like it if it was you and you opposed it? And that's what I'm looking at, for us to start looking at some things in the future before we go down that road. We have a state government that tends to, to do it, and unfortunately, you guys all get punished for too much of it. But we just have to find ways even to go back up against, as small governments, against the state, and I think we can stand together and do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Okay, then we will go to council announcements. Mike?
I don't have any.
Lori?
I do. And it concerns the OHB community and the green sticker funds and the state, and all that loveliness is all on the table again, which I mentioned a little bit, but there is a meeting taking place, hold on, because I'm trying to pull it up on my calendar here, because it is the 11th of August. I know the day, I don't know, the date, I don't know which day that is. It's Thursday on the 11th, because I'm going to be going down there, and when I say down there, I believe it's Ontario, but I do have all of the information, so if you're interested in it, holler at me after the meeting, and I'll get you all the details on all of that if you want to go talk to somebody. Make your voice heard, because we need that. Otherwise, the green sticker funds that you pay for to take care of your public lands, they won't be there anymore. They'll still be collected. They just won't go to your public lands in that sense, so, but we can go in depth if you'd like to, and if you'd like to attend after the meeting, let me know. That's it.
Okay. I don't have any at this time. I'll reserve my comments for council comments after the meeting. So, we will then come to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, that item may be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Item number one, proposed action to approve a resolution awarding construction contact, contract to downing construction in the amount of $2,046,046 for Phase 1 of the sewer system rehabilitation project, and authorize the city manager, Dennis Spear, to execute the contract. Number two, proposed action to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a notice of completion on the Kerr McGee Youth Sports Complex concession room, restroom project, authorizing the city clerk to file the notice of completion, and authorizing the release of the retention in the amount of $18,374 after the recording of the notice of completion. And number three, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Ridgecrest City of Council Successor Agency Redevelopment Financing Authority minutes dated July 20th, 2016. Is there anybody in council who would like an item pulled?
I just have a real quick one, number two.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public who would like any of the items pulled? Number one. Okay, so, we are going to then entertain a motion to approve number three.
Still moved. Second.
Councilmember Mauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
All approve.
Okay. Item number one. Dr. Rattorah, you asked for that one to be pulled. Could you address your concerns?
Stan Rattorah. I was curious, how much does it cost to do the street repave, repave, part of that particular cost? If the total's $2 million, it doesn't break it out in terms of how much is actually for the sewer and how much is for repaving church after the street is torn up and, and the sewer
Honorable Mayor, may I?
Please.
Yes, that amount is broken down in the bidding documents for the street restoration. However, I do not have that information readily available. I'd be glad to provide that information if you so desire.
Well, yes, I, I would, I would like it. I, the wastewater funds are for the wastewater plant and for the sewer lines, and obviously, we've got some that are in pretty bad shape, and they need to be fixed, or in this case, my understanding is just totally replaced. According to the PMS report, the, the city, pardon me, the street is totally failed. So, we have a totally failed street, and what we're doing is ending up, we're, we're repaving a street with wastewater money. My feeling is that's not what the wastewater fund is for. So, the bottom line is, we get a new street, but the wastewater fund is out the money. We have known for many years that that street is failed, and we have known for many years that, in all probability, we were going to have to replace that sewer line going along California. As a matter of fact, I believe it may have been the very first street that we found that was damaged and needing repair. So, we've had probably five, six, seven years to plan for other funding to replace that road when the sewer line was fixed. My feeling is that we could, we have to do a better job of trying to integrate the, the road work with the sewer line work. We cannot use a strategy that we're going to wait until the sewer lines fail to replace the roads. Obviously, that's not going to work. So, in any event, I would like to suggest that we find some different source, a different source of funding to do the repave and, and not hit the wastewater fund. Obviously, we, we need a new wastewater treatment facility. That's what that money needs to be used for. Thank you.
Thank you. Do, would you address that at all, Mr. Porter, Mr. Spear?
Yes. Honorable Mayor, yes, the nature of the sewer line reconstruction is quite an invasive type of construction that requires quite a large excavation within the street, and the amount of patchwork that would be necessary just to replace the excavation site or the excavation for the trench would take up quite a bit of the existing roadway section. Staff felt that it was prudent to also overlay those portions on either side of that trench to make for a complete street. I might add that, that other agencies, when there is a very invasive type of utility that's constructed, will oftentimes require the entire street to be overlaid in that, for the restoration of that street. So, given the nature of the very extensive amount of excavation that would occur in that street section, and the fact that there'd be a patch, quite a large patch on, in the middle of the street, and very little of the existing remaining street on either side of that patch, staff felt it would be in the best interest to overlay those portions that did not have patch in that, in that particular street.
It wasn't at the infrastructure committee meeting, and, gentlemen, I know you discussed that, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And I asked, by the way, for the cost at that meeting, and it wasn't available at that point in time. I, I don't disagree with anything that Lauren says. My feeling is, you know, if this was a newly paved street and we were totally tearing it up, it was an emergency that it be done, then using the wastewater fund, obviously, in that situation where you're, you, you got to do it. In this particular case, the, the street is already failed. All right? We have had five or six or seven, maybe eight, I don't know, it's a lot of years to figure out how to repave that street when we went in with a sewer line, and yet, we haven't. So, you know, I would agree that the street needs to be repaved. The sewer line needs to be repaired. I would only suggest that we, we can do much better in terms of managing both our road program using road funds and the wastewater program using wastewater funds. We need to integrate that, and we can't keep relying on the wastewater fund to do everything. There's not enough money in the wastewater fund to do roads and, and also put in a wastewater plant.
Well, a comment I have on that, in terms of the two different programs that Dr. Rattorah mentioned, you mentioned first the PMS, and I know that I've stated this many times, infrastructure in here, PMS is not what people expect as far as the pavement management system. It's a preventive program. It's, and what it is, is to preserve the roads that you have. And so, the order of streets, it would be indicated for us to follow a state, and actually, federal mandated pavement management system, is based on preserving the best streets first, not the worst. The church involved here, obviously, is the church street, which is involved here, is obviously one of the, has a lower PCI than most streets in town, whereas the, that does not necessarily correlate to the work plan that our consultants are preparing for the, the category five lines that need to be replaced as far as our sewer system. So, typically, I mean, and not typically, but it's, on a case-by-case basis, you may have, in fact, a street that's completely deteriorated, but that's not where the pavement management... in fact, a street that's completely deteriorated, but that's not where the pavement management system says you're supposed to be spending your money anyhow. For streets that have completely deteriorated, we have to rely on RSTP money, money that's programmed, and that's always three years out. So, for us to be able to follow a work plan to rehabilitate the sewers, we can't, at the same time, coordinate and give away our maintenance money for the worst first. And we aren't necessarily assured whether that particular street, if we were to put in on a call for projects, if we were to apply for that particular street, we're not assured of getting that money. And yet, our sewer system is still deteriorating.
Yeah. No, I understand the purpose of the PMS and doing the, making sure that the roads we currently have don't deteriorate any more than they already have. And I would totally agree with that if indeed, for any street which is also not having a sewer problem. This street is having a sewer problem, and we are not bound by the PMS. Because the council doesn't have to vote based upon the PMS. The council should be voting for what is best for the city, and that would include what is best both for the wastewater fund and for the roads, all right? So, I don't disagree with what Mr. Spear says. I'm just thinking that since we've known about this for years and years and years, that we ought to be able to coordinate with the road funding with the digging up of the streets for the sewer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ron Porter. I agree with everything Mr. Ricker said, but there is one question or one something to think about right off the bat, and that is, the sewer, we did, I assume this study was completed for the sewer lines that need to be replaced. There should be an overlay on where streets, what streets those lay under, so we don't repair streets that they're going to have to cut up in a year or so, see if they can't coordinate the two. That's just my suggestion on what he was talking about. So, if you have the money, you coordinate the sewer repair with the street repair. But my position here is, I have a problem still with this money coming out of the sewer fund, because, and I'm going to be a broken record, but the original fund for the sewer was set aside for sewer plant only, not maintenance, not sewer lines. Yes, it was, I was there. And if you go back and check the history, that's exactly what it's set up for. All of, prior to that fund, all the money that the citizens, the money that paid for our sewer plant, the money that paid for the sewer for the citizens came out of the general funds and not out of their pockets. And what I'm concerned here, and some of it has to the states and some of it happened long before you were here, is that we're going to continue to reach in and dig into the pockets of the people, because either the state's stealing money or we're getting mandates that shouldn't be there. I supported the sewer fund when it first came out, but I don't support when they started using it for maintenance. I didn't support when they started using it for sewer lines. If we need to deal with that, then let's deal with it upfront and honestly before the people. Thank you.
Is there a document or something that we can reference?
Well, we will research that, but the...
I'd like to look into that.
As far as the wastewater treatment fund, as long as I've been here, it's been used for our collection system. It actually provides our operations. Our operations is both our sanitary sewer collection lines, which actually provide the influent to the wastewater treatment plant. You could not treat water at the plant unless you maintain your collection system.
Yeah. No, I'm not arguing one way or another, but yeah, if we could look into that, maybe we'll bring it to the infrastructure committee and...
If you want to know, it started about, right, 1987 is when the initial sewer fund came into place, and it was sold to the citizens as just for the sewer plant only. The rest of the, the rest of the maintenance came out of general funds.
Okay. Was that a part of, like, the resolution from the council and establishing the fund?
There was actually a vote on it.
Okay.
A vote of the council?
We'll look into it.
The public.
I'm sorry, 2018 type? No, wait, '87?
That was prior to 2018, so no.
Yeah, no, exactly. Wait a minute, never mind, '87, so.
2018 has an impact on it, but if you can figure it out, tell me, because I'd like to really, thank you.
Okay, so what's the direction of the council?
The rate hike that we did, as part of the rate study, when we did the rates, included maintenance of the lines and all of that. So, I know that is now included. So, I think we're going to have to have some research on, at least in that area, if we're doing it wrong. It seems so odd to me that we wouldn't have it in there, but I don't know.
Well, if we rely on the general fund to pay for the sewer line replacements, they're never going to happen.
Oh, the general, yeah, there's no way. So, yeah, it's not going to happen, I know that.
But is that how it was designed? Can you...
Well, we're going to try and find the reference document, the original document that created the wastewater fund, and find out what, if there are limitations or restrictions on the use of those funds.
So, what is the direction of council on this particular item, then?
I think, well, I was just going to see if staff could bring it back to infrastructure committee, and we can discuss it there. Or if we want to bring it here, we can, but...
I guess I'm asking, if we ask this particular contract to go back to staff...
Oh, you're talking about the resolution.
The agenda item.
Yeah, the agenda item, to go back to staff.
Well, you either have to award the contract or not, or we have no other means of paying that particular...
That's what I'm asking. So, if it goes back, we're not, obviously not going to award it.
Because if the sewer fails and you get a notice of violation from the Hutton, then you will be fixing these, all the lines, and that'll be under an order as opposed to a preventive maintenance.
I propose we move forward with the knowledge that we have today, and we'll look into the claims as we go on. But I'll make a motion to approve item number one.
And I would second that, because I absolutely agree with what Sanders just said.
Is there any comment, other council comment?
Councilmember Mauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
All approve.
I would like staff to look at this and come back with some answers for us, how we separate that out.
Particularly the fund, yes.
Yes, thank you. Item number two. I'm not going to read it again, so, sir?
Yes. Yes, I just had a real quick question, Mr. Patton, and that is, it appears that we are, we're pretty much done with the work that's been done out there?
Correct.
And we're pretty much at the final payment. Is that what this is about?
Right, the work's been completed. They're just asking for the final retention payment that we hold back till we make sure everything's been completed. There was a little bit of a delay because there were some issues, but they're complete.
Okay, that was part of my, other question was about their delay. It wasn't our part, was it? It was something that, in the design or installation, they came, because we were going to have some big celebration. And I apologize for not getting a chance to talk to you. And I seen you today, and I was going to talk to you about it, but I got sidetracked.
Yeah, the delays were from the health department. They had installed something in the original building that was, excuse me, that was a wrong, it was a brass backflow just system that had to be stainless steel, so they had to order it and do all that, and it took them a little bit. Then you have to have the health department come back out and do it, but that's all been completed.
Okay. Are you still planning a great big to-do to sing our song, how well we've done? And so, I know sports are ramping up, and the kids are ready, and there's money to be made, and there's Mr., Matthew says there's free hot dogs that you're going to be supplying. No, not really. But are we going to still have a great big celebration to sing our songs? I think one of the great things we have in this community, we don't do well, and that is we don't talk about the good things. So, we're going to ramp up and do something like that now that we passed the delay and we're ready to do the final payment, sir?
I would probably think we might do that at the completion of the entire project. That was basically a forced increase on that project because the previous facility burned down, because that, really, that facility was, the concession part of it was really part of a bigger plan that was going to be, that we're working on right now. So, we ramped up the effort for the concession part since the other one burned down. But Phase Two is the completion of the entire complex, which will be starting, we're slated to start in November and be completed by March. So, I think maybe if we want to do something like that, we wait till the entire project is done.
The final one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The weather will be better.
Is the facility being used now?
It's, they're on a very short break between spring and fall baseball, but they'll be ramping back up here real shortly. They use the facility about nine months out of the year, the baseball organization does.
So, it's been used?
You're talking about the building?
I'm talking about the building.
Oh, yeah, the building was used this past spring baseball season. Oh, yeah, it's in total operation now.
Even without the health department's approval?
Oh, no, it was approved. It was approved. We didn't let them in the building till the health department gave their final approval. The rest of it's just been paperwork for the payment and the delays. And even after your approval, it still goes another 30 days before they get paid, so.
Last question. When we throw the first baseball out, can we have Mr. Matthews throw the first baseball out?
If he buys the hot dogs.
I'll make a motion.
You have a comment over here?
I see him. Go ahead, Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Ron Porter. I just had a quick question. What was the total cost of that restrooms and...
To be honest with you, I don't have that number in front of me.
What was the bid cost on it?
I don't recall. I don't have that information from them. I don't want to quote a wrong number to you.
Approximately?
Did you retain 18, or, I mean, 5 or 10%?
It was 5%. It would have been 5%, because the, it was around 300.
About 300 and...
It was around 300.
60,000, something like that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other comment, any other council comment? Motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Councilmember Mauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
All approve.
Okay, the next item. Mr. Sanders, you have that one?
Yes, and I am ready to make a nomination tonight, finally. So, I appreciate council's patience with me, but I found someone who's very, very well qualified for this position. I'd like to nominate Mr. Wallace Martin, who's here with us tonight for the planning commission. And if I may, for the public's benefit and for the council's benefit, I want to read a little bit of, you know, his qualifications and his experience so that we can get to know him. Wallace currently serves as the Deputy Director of NOC WD Business Development Office, a position he's held for the last 16 years. In addition, his career includes 16 years in private industry and business ownership. He is an advanced marketing strategist, writer, and public speaker. His principal focus on base is on external communications, and he tells the story of NOC WD to the world via three high-profile NOC WD publications. His 280-page book, Arming the Fleet, is in the Library of Congress and showcases China Lake's accomplishments from 1943 to 2011. It is distributed nationwide. Another publication, the major facilities and range guide, is a prominent feature of the NOC WD public website. During his long career, Martin has been involved in many community development and planning projects in a variety of roles. In the early 1980s, he worked closely with Jim Gregory in a marketing and planning capacity regarding the Heritage Village project, probably one of the most successful projects in town, and the Village Plaza Mall. He was a licensed Realtor with Coldwell Banker for five years, working on many development projects, including being the tract agent for the JL Gray Construction and the La Serena Development. He later worked for the BLM as an analyst, working on land use planning and environmental impact statements regarding wind energy and Briggs mining projects. Regarding property management and planning, he has owned and managed investments, investment properties for more than 16 years. In addition, Wallace has owned and operated WT Martin Auctions for many years. You've probably seen him at a few of the auctions. He does an excellent job involving business and commercial liquidations and estate auctions and most charity auctions for a wide range of local organizations in our community. So, I was very impressed with this individual. I think he's going to make a great addition to the planning commission, and that is my nomination. So, with that all...
Can he stand?
Was that, yeah, would you like to stand, so we could see who you are, so?
Do you have anything you'd like to say, Wallace?
Thank you. That's a very nice introduction, and I'm honored.
Would you wait till the, thank you.
Probably here. But no, thank you, Jim, and I'm delighted to accept the nomination, and I'm excited about working with the city. I think greatest times are yet to come, and I'm hoping to be a part of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a nomination. Is there any other discussion?
I'll make a motion if you want, or...
Okay.
I'll make a motion to nominate Wallace Martin to the planning commission.
And I'll second it.
Okay, is there any other discussion, then?
Do we have to do public comment on that one, or...
No one stood up. Did anyone have a public comment? Okay.
Oh, no.
He doesn't count.
Thank you, Jim. Okay.
Councilmember Mauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
All approve.
Welcome.
Welcome, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is discussion and proposed action to adopt a resolution approving a joint powers, a joint exercise of powers agreement to create the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement and authorizing payment from the city portion of the initial capital funding in the amount of $15,000. Mr. Lemieux.
Yes, the agenda is not entirely correct. The Joint Powers Authority has been formed by other public entities. I think we decided there were five others.
Four others.
Four others. And the question is whether the city will be the fifth entity to participate in the Joint Powers Authority. If it's formed, it will be, it will constitute a groundwater sustainability agency, a GSA. I'd rather call it a management agency, because it really describes a little better what it does. And the joint powers agreement is the document, is the charter forming this entity. At the present time, four entities have signed on. The question is whether you want to sign on or not. I think this has been discussed from a lot of different angles at many council meetings, but if you have any more questions, I'll try to address them.
Are there any questions from council?
I've got, are we talking about the actual...
Are we talking about the actual agreement right now?
Yes.
I do have a few. Let me, go ahead and come back to me. I'm going to get organized.
Okay. All right, I see public. Mrs. Thomas, if you'd like to come up?
I'm Donna Thomas, Vice President of Eastern Kern County Resource Conservation District. And as I understand this GSA formation process, the Department of Water Resource says it's to be a collaborative effort among all eligible local public agencies. So, each agency has its own board, and the board members determine how they wish to Personally, I believe it's not correct for other... Personally, I believe it's not correct for other eligible local agencies to decide how a particular eligible agency should take part. So I'd like to make a listing of what the RCD has done through the process. March 14th, we wrote a letter asking that East Kern participate in the formation of the agencies. April 16th, the county CAO, Mr. Erickson, sent us a letter stating that East Kern did not meet the legal requirements of SIGMA, and we were not eligible as a local public agency. So the RCD wrote to the Department of Water Resources. Under frequently asked questions on their webpage, they referred us to the State Water Resources Control Board. The RCD submitted our formation documents to the State Water Resources Control Board in May. On June 22nd, the RCD received a letter from the State Water Resources Control Board stating that we are an eligible local agency for GSA formation. Since then, we have submitted that letter, along with other letters and documentation, to be part of the public record at each of the hearings held by the JPA signatories. So, we are submitting that letter, a copy of that letter, to you, and also explanation. At the time of our first request, it was assumed that we would, our board were asking to be a voting member. And we were told we could not be a voting member because we had appointed officials rather than elected, and we had no police powers. And they probably gave other reasons as well, but those were the two main ones. And they said, you can serve on a committee, that's fine. So after our June 22nd letter, our board held a special meeting to discuss our GSA On July 18th, 2016, our board members determined that meaningful participation in the GSA governing group of eligible local agencies meant that we, it would be best for us to serve as an associate member. The reasonings were that, under Division Nine of the Public Resources Code, we are identified as a non-regulatory agency. We work mostly with incentives, best management practices, trying to come to solutions to resource problems. So we thought it would be more appropriate if we were an associate member, didn't have to worry about a vote, about not being elected, about not having police powers. And we felt that in that capacity, our board could better represent a lot of the stakeholder groups that have been left out of this process. We have board members that represent well owners, that represent private landowners, that represent a water hauler, two past members of the Indian Wells Valley Water District Board. One is a member of a police group in California City, and another is a superb volunteer from And we also asked for a separate MOU. So we took this request to the Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting on July 19th, and we have a copy of the letter there in your packet. We asked them to approve us, to appoint us as an associate member of the group with a separate MOU. We feel that the RCD has a lot that we can offer in the way of access to technical assistance from federal and state agencies, from many other groups. We've also written grants over the years and managed grants relating to flood management, watershed coordinator management, and other grants like that. So we presented the option to the board. There was no discussion of the option. There was only a comment by one of the supervisors who said, we're simply told again, you have no police power, but the GSA has plans for the RCD to serve on a committee. They did not distinguish the difference between a voting member, that had been discussed before, and the possibility of an associate member. So this is our final presentation at a signatory public hearing, and we are asking for these documents to be included in the public record. We have added one page to some of our past documents, and that page includes a summary listing of some of the code sections from Division Nine of the Public Resource Court. Please read the section stating, "It is the intent of the legislature." There are several bold, bold statements there. It is the intent of a legislature.
Mrs. Thomas, wait one minute. Can you tell me where the doc, what that is? Is that what you're reading, so I can follow?
It's on the front page.
Oh, the fr-
It's a top page.
I'm sorry. Thank you. My apologies.
And I don't have the copy before me, but there are several that say, it's the intent of the legislature that RCDs cooperate with cities and counties on local resource issues. There's another section where it says, "We cooperate with federal agencies such as the Department of Agriculture, the Environmental Protection Agency," and there's a list of So I'd like for you to keep in mind the focus of the SIGMA legislation that encourages all GSA eligible agencies to coordinate together as they form GSAs and establish a basin-wide governance structure. We are starting to feel that we have exhausted all of our attempts at the local level to ask to be included in the process. We can now fully empathize with the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We know exactly how it feels to be left out of a GSA formation. They have stated to us that they have been left out of the Kern River GSA, the Greenfield Water District GSA, and I think there's a third one. So, we sympathize with them. We know how it feels to be left out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ronald Porter, I have to apologize, I didn't have the time to read that whole thing through before the city council meeting. But my question's, basically, from what I've read over the, over this in the past, is we're buying into a box of worms. We're creating another entity that, in this particular situation, won't have the power to correct the problems that they want us to find. But my question first and foremost is, who authorized this GSA? My understanding was either the local people took it, or the state would do it. Well, who made the determination when it was going to be completed? Who had that authority? I can't find it. Maybe somebody can answer the question. But more important here is if there's a need for water outside this valley to be imported into this valley, the local resource, the local management board or GSA will not have the authority to get it. Whereas if we left it to the state, hey, then they get the expense, they have the authority to do it. If we technically needed water to come out of the aqueduct up here, we could actually trade water and say, well, you state, we pay for part of it. We want some of them out of the California aqueduct, and we'll just trade it down at The problem being is, this is a small agency that's not going to have the power or resources except to place on the local governments to pick it up. There's a, there's a cost in here in the city pocket to come in and pay to become part of this organization. Well, this is mandated out of the state government, and under the California Constitution, if they mandate something, they must pay for it. They can't put it down on the, on the local cities. Why, this is only the first payment. We don't know how much they're going to want to get into the city pockets later. I haven't read the binding agreements in the other agreement, but we're already short money. Do we need to start putting ourselves binding into more money? I think that's a very serious question. What happens if we join this and we find this isn't working? What's the out clause? Not just the out clause for the city, what's the out clause for the citizens? The city can walk away, but we're still going to be the ones, you and I and everyone are going to be the ones paying it. This is something that's, it has, to me, in a lot of ways, very destructive nature in the future, without, without looking to these. And I'm glad it's here on the agenda tonight. I think we need to put it back on the agenda. I think more people need to talk about it. But one thing I do want to know is, who authorized the local GSA versus the state GSA, and where was that authority? What legislative body gave the, what legislative body created this GSA?
Mr. Lemieux, do you want to answer some of those questions, please?
Yeah, there's a lot of, there are a lot of questions there. I think I can answer many of them. First off, the, the local GSA was authorized surreptitum each time that one of the members approved it. That's four other agencies have already acted to authorize the GSA. It exists, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, whether we join it or not. So tonight, the question is whether we join it. But it exists. It's like burying, it's not a perfect analogy, but it's like buying stock in an existing corporation. We would join the corporation, have the ability to influence the outcome of the corporate's, that corporation's actions. So, who authorized it? Several agencies have already authorized it. One question you ask is, what happens if the city wants to get out of it? Well, if the city wants to get out of the Joint Powers Authority, the remaining four entities includes the Water District, three counties, and the Indian Wells County Community Services District. What's the fourth?
They're not.
Water District and three counties, yeah. Okay. They'll keep doing what they're doing. They'll manage the basin, they'll develop a management plan, and they'll enforce a management plan with or without the city. Your comment that this agency won't have enough power or ability to function, I think is misplaced. It has the ability to do some very important things, things that prevent the basin from being managed, one of which is to establish the safe yield of the basins. We know how much can be safely taken, and once you know how much can be safely pumped, compared with actual pumping, you have an idea of either the cutbacks that need to be done, or the water that needs to be imported, and the agency's in a position to levy, I'm going to call it a pump tax, it's not really technically what it is, but that's what everybody knows, levy fees on pumping to collect the money to buy the imported water. Whether anybody can make a deal with the city of Los Angeles has been an open question for a number of years, but what you suggest is very logical, that water be taken from the LA aqueduct, dropped off here. The city is a member of the Kern County Water Agency, believe it or not, and the city could buy water from the Kern, the city or the GSA, buy water from the Kern County Water Agency and ask that it be delivered to the, back to the LA aqueduct in the southern edge of the Antelope Valley, and it would balance out nicely, it'd be fine, it'd be easy to do, but you are dealing with the city of Los Angeles, and they are a little, it pucker a little bit when it comes to LA aqueduct.
No dispute.
Yeah.
Okay, what, okay, I'm going to ask one other question, there's four other legislative bodies, and excuse my ignorance. What other legislative bodies are those?
The three counties, San Bernardino, Inyo, and Kern, and the Indian Wells Valley Water District.
Okay, well, so, out of that, we basically, as far as any real true legislative authority, we have three, four counties, and of the four counties?
Three counties.
Three counties, okay. The three counties, Inyo County really has no particular?
Yeah, the overlap, same with San Bernardino.
No, no, I understand.
They overlap a little bit of the basin.
No, I understand, I don't know exactly where the county lines are. But as far as the basin of this valley, the majority of people being hit here, they're, they really have no horse in the race. They, the bonded water that Inyo County uses out of our basin is slim to none. Same with San Bernardino County, other than what they pump out for Cerrills Valley.
They believe, the counties believe they have an interest significantly, and significant enough to justify their participation. I agree with you that their interest is less than the water districts or the cities, but I can't argue with you about whether their interest is enough for them to want to participate. That's their decision.
Yes, but the, but we run into a problem of balance, and that's my biggest concern. Because we're, we're one out of three, basically, they can say, we don't care, you guys get to pay the bill, even though we're only one person out of 100.
We would be one out of four, or zero out of three.
No, I don't, no, you're, you're counting numbers of representative, I'm talking about population. The number of people that will be dependent upon it on this valley is actually, it would probably, versus Cerrills and Inyo County, it would probably be 1,000 to 1.
There's no doubt.
It would be impacted.
I can't argue about that. I'm just saying, they had a right to participate, and they, uh?
I understand, I'm just saying.
It was negotiated for them to participate.
I understand that. I'm just saying, so, the other three, you're saying that these other, the Inyo County and Kern County says, we're going to set this up, and you guys either take it or leave it. Well, my vote is to leave it.
That is not the case.
No, I don't want to characterize, they've, they've been, they've had a good spirit in the negotiation with us.
I'm not, I don't mean it that way.
But nobody said take it or leave it.
Well, no, that's what we're being basically told.
No, you're not.
No.
The majority's already voted. We either, we either jump on the bandwagon or we don't.
Well, that's, they're not telling us, take it or leave it.
Well, they have exactly what they're telling us.
I'm telling the council that if you don't approve membership, they'll do it without you.
That's right. Take it or leave it.
I'm telling them that.
I know, and that's what they're saying. When you have three to four, it's take it or leave it. It's mob rules.
No, it isn't.
You, you can look at it any way you want, but that's what it boils down to. But the people with the greatest interest here are sitting at the table with the least amount of power, and that's, that has a serious problem.
If we would have approved it first, the others couldn't have argued that we're telling them, take it or leave it.
Oh, actually, they could have, they were the last one, if it was San Bernardino, but...
So, there's, there's a specific clause in here about voting, and this is one of the things I had a question about. I don't fully understand it, and I want to understand it, but it seems as though that the three, Kern County, Ridgecrest, and the Water District do have more power in the, in the vote, in the way the voting is structured. I don't fully understand that, though.
And then the super vote. There's only a couple of reasons for a super vote, where everybody has to agree.
That's right.
Wade, if you want to address that.
So I'm going to ask more details about that, if, if you want to wait, or we could address it now.
What's the section?
Uh, 7.07.
Yeah.
Okay, you got a question, I'll do it. 707. No action shall be approved unless it receives the affirmative vote of two out of three directors representing Kern County, City of Ridgecrest, or the Water District. So, all four can vote for something, and there's some categories that that's not quite so strict, but anything significant has to be approved at least by Kern County. But anything significant has to be approved at least by Kern County, Ridgecrest, and/or the Water District, two out of three. So San Bernardino and Inyo Kern are not going to carry the day if the Water District and the City of Ridgecrest are united.
So say, for instance, an example, if Inyo County, San Bernardino County, and Kern County all voted yes on something, but Ridgecrest and the Water District voted no, it wouldn't pass?
It wouldn't pass.
It wouldn't pass.
Okay. And I guess the second paragraph just is reiterating that fact?
Well, there's... The second paragraph deals with buying staples and paper and all the routine things you do. That's just a simple majority vote.
Okay. Ministerial duties. Well, I still have a question on the funding part of this because this was a state mandate and they're going after the local to pay for it. I know they're going to say, well, you had a choice. You could give it to us and we'd pay for it. But it's still a mandate. It's still a ban.
No, that's exactly what they said.
Right. But it's under California constitution, they're mandated to pay for it.
No, they're not.
Actually, you and I disagree, but I... That's fine.
We have a choice of whether doing it or not. We find it's in our best interest to have local control. That's not a state mandate.
Actually, it is. Because they told you, "You had to do it or else." So you can...
They didn't say, "You had to do it or else."
No. Well, part of...
They said, "If you want to do this, you may do it."
If you don't, I will. That's do it or else.
Okay. Well, Constitution, that would have been the GAN initiative. Doesn't require payment for that.
Actually, if you study it, I'm going to disagree with you vehemently. And that's the reason why they did it that way is because they wanted to yet again steal from our local governments to pay for this, something that they wanted.
Of course. But that doesn't mean that we have a right to be paid.
Yes, it does. That's what the California constitution says, if you go read the original intent of that.
They were skillful. You've got to give them credit for that.
Well, actually, I've read it. And the skillfulness is what lawyers have done since then. But my basic point is... And my problem with it is that we're going to end up with a board that may or may not help us, and we're going to end up going down a road that's going to cause more problems than it's going to solve. Thank you.
May I say one thing?
Sure.
We may have a board. Yes, we will. We will have a board because already we have four entities who've approved it, 50, 50, 50, and 32. So there is a board. And one of the things that we were told by Sigma, and Wayne, if I'm saying something incorrectly, please show me, but if you don't do it, we will do it for you. And not, are we going to pay for it? You will pay for it. Nobody knows us better than us.
Yes.
Nobody knows our needs better than we do. Nobody knows the options we have or don't have better than we do. And the state tells me, "I will do it for you if you choose not to, and we will charge you what we think is the fair price." Am I incorrect in that?
Yeah. But I think that argument is a couple iterations ago. The state's no longer threatening to do it for us. There's a joint powers authority that will manage the basin. Or... And you can be a party. You can be a member of the governing board of that joint powers authority or not.
Yeah. The iteration was in the beginning. Once it's there, they are going to... They... Inyo County, Kern County, San Bernardino County, and the Water District will do it, whether we participate or not.
Oh, I understand that. And it's all blackmail being counted on us. And, you know, we're supposed to be a republic where the people control the government. And I know you don't like me when I say it.
I don't have any like or dislike for you when you say that.
But the fact is, it's dictatorship and it needs to stop whether it's in our hands or somewhere else. My point being very simply is just like, you said, they're going to have a vote. Well, if they have a vote to... Where they're going to tax or attach people's wells, is the city council going to bring that vote back to here and have public discussion on it?
Yes. That was our discussion when we first talked about it. Other than the ministerial duties, we will vote whoever the representative is, we'll vote on it. Those things that have significant importance, and I don't know how you define those, but we all know what they are when we see them, will come back to the city council and say, "What do y'all think?"
Is there a provision in there to do that?
It's our provision.
No.
Yeah.
No, it's not what I'm saying.
And it is. It is in there.
Is there a provision that says, when we have a proposal, we do it and there's the 30-day waiting period so they can bring it back to their councils?
They have to comply with the Brown Act, like everybody else. Sigma has regulations for public hearings.
That's not my question.
And the person who represents the city will represent the city as he or she is told to represent the city or be replaced.
Yeah. So Ron, let me say my intent.
I need to continue with this.
Go ahead.
Basically, what I'm asking, which is the most important part about a republic form of government, is that if Mrs. Breeden happens to be the representative, if she gets this notice, is she going to have time to come back to hear her people and get the information she needs? Or is it going to be, okay, here's the five-day notice under the Brown Act?
No, she's going to have time. And what you're saying is totally illogical. You're saying republican form of government is furthered by the city not being represented on the joint powers authority.
No, you're putting words in my mouth, sir. I didn't say that whatsoever.
Well, this is not unlike the way the United States Senate was originally set up, where you had the state governments sending a representative.
I'm not by a republican form of government, where it's a representative form of government. What I'm saying is, and this is to protect whosoever our representative here, if it's something of very importance, there has to be something in the system saying, this has to be put on hold until I can take it back and hear from my people.
So if they don't, if our representative doesn't, you could better believe I'm going to be hopping and screaming, saying, "Let's kick them out and replace them with someone else."
But there will only be a city representative if the city votes to be party.
Yes, blackmail yet again.
Correct. So it's... You can't...
You're not going to agree with me because you don't understand government, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tom Wake, Anderson File. You got Mr. Wayne Lemieux here. Hello, Wayne.
Hi, Tom.
Does it cost more to have him here?
Five times. $500,000 a minute he makes.
Oh.
All right, I lied. I lied.
I accept.
Okay. Because you brought the big guns.
We didn't vote on that contract.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to comment. So I'm understanding that when they approve this joining the GSA, they are accepting this agreement as it's presented in the agenda packet.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to point out that this GSA will have a lot of power, as all of you know already. But the public should know that this GSA will have a lot of power to do a lot of things to the people in the valley. And that's why I've supported, and when I talk about Section 6.02, which is on page seven, Directors and Alderminets, which is the officers. And to me, that's probably one of the very important sections in here, in that it says that if you go to the third sentence in there, it says, "The primary and alderminet directors for the county of Kern, Indian Wells Valley Water District, and the City of Ridgecrest shall be elected members of their governing bodies." And we've had that discussed many times. It's in this agreement. I would like to just continue to make sure that Wayne will confirm that I have the proper understanding of the next line. "Primary directors and alderminet directors shall serve at the pleasure of the governing body appointing them, and they may be removed at any time with or without the out clause in the sole discretion of the governing body." Okay? So in the sentence before, it said, "They will be elected officials," okay, which is perfect.
Five of them.
Right. And then that would mean that at the end, if, once they leave office, they are no longer a member representing the City of Ridgecrest on this board.
Right.
Okay. Just want to make sure I'm understanding that properly. Because it says, "In the sole discretion of their governing body..." Oh, okay. "Each primary and alderminet director shall hold office until their successor is selected by their governing body and the authority has been notified of the succession."
Yeah, that's in case somebody's removed midterm or for some continuity. But my opinion would be, at the end of... If somebody is no longer on the council, they're no longer eligible to serve on this, and you need to appoint somebody.
Okay. And that's... Not that I suspect anybody of any foul play, but this is... Never mind. I wouldn't even go there. But it's just, want to make sure that when their term of office is over, their term of office on this is over, and they couldn't say, "Well, just keep doing it for a month until we decide who's going to serve on this thing."
But no, remember what happens. You have an election, and then there's a... Often as long as 30 days before the results are certified.
Right.
And it goes to the Secretary of State and so on. So there's time in that 30 days to see that somebody who was on there is no longer elected official. Better get... We've got to get it on our agenda.
Right.
There's a little give and take there.
I think your point, Tom, is the first meeting of the new body needs to make the new appointments.
Along with all their other appointments.
Yeah, along with all the planning commission, et cetera, et cetera.
Will the municipal code have to be modified to include this?
I don't think so. We've got a contract. What we like to do is, these kind of things that are contractual obligations, let them work out a little bit. And when they become embedded, then we'll bring back the municipal code. And the purpose of municipal code is to remind everybody what's going on.
My only reason to bring it up is because the municipal code does say that the council will, upon seating of a new council, will select these people to do certain duties, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, we'll get to that as soon as...
Okay.
As soon as the basin is balanced.
So this would be included in that in the future?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
He was making a joke. You let it pass.
Okay. And I think that's it. I think when there was a meeting, I think I watched it on TV, though, but a representative of, I think, the Water... Not the Water District, but the State Water Board, right down here when you were sitting in front. And he said that in the event that he didn't form a GSA, they would form one for us. Not that they would come down and do it, okay? What he said was, they would form their own GSA with their own authorities, with all their own paperwork, and come down here and put it on somebody down here to do it.
That was one of the options they said. But the other part of it was, or we will do it and charge you.
Okay. But at the same time, he said, "We don't want to do it."
I don't remember the exact verbiage, but that was...
Yeah. So they're really playing a heavy hand, obviously, that we get our act together and proceed with it. So anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dave Matthews. Good evening, Wayne. Good to see you. I want... Would you reiterate the name of the entity that is... Has already been formed?
Okay. It's the... It's the Wayne K. Lemieux Groundwater Management Authority.
Authority.
Yeah.
Okay. That's part of my...
Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority.
Oh, yeah. That's part of my concern here. When this whole discussion started out, we were going to form a groundwater sustainability agency. Now, would you expand for me and others, what is the difference between an agency and an authority? Because I think there's a great difference.
There's... No, there isn't. The... I hate all these initials that government comes up with. But the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or SIGMA, allows for the creation of groundwater sustainability agents, sustainable agencies, or GSAs. And among the permitted types of GSA is a joint powers authority, or JPA. The last one, I use the word authority. So the joint powers authority will function as a GSA agency, a last word, agency.
Hmm.
It's... You can't be blamed for objecting to that. But this is a GSA under SGMA.
Okay. I didn't get a chance to look up the difference between them before I got down here, but I will do that when I get back. I still think there's a difference. But...
There may be a difference, but in this case, they're all put in the same envelope.
Okay. In a similar manner, the state agency that got this all started or mandated it, whatever, is called the State Water Resources Control Board.
Right.
And I emphasize the word control because that's what they're doing. And they're not... What they really should be is a state water resources management authority or...
They are controlled. They're calling themselves the California Water Boards now. They've figured out that nobody likes to be controlled.
But I think there's a reason in somebody's mind up there as to why they're controlled. But what they... In my opinion, what they should be is the resources management with the intent to expand the resources rather than try and cut back, control, whatever they're trying to do now. I'm just throwing that out for the council's benefit here and everybody else. Somewhere in here, I was looking through some of this stuff for this evening, it said something about the total cost of running this thing for 10 years, I think, was going to be $2 million.
That was the estimate, yes.
I'm sorry?
That was an estimate from Kern County.
Yeah. Well, so where does that $2 million come from? The city's almost broke. Kern County's broke.
There's $225,000 that was given to Kern County, actually, $500,000. And half of it was... It was $250,000, then. Half of it went to the northern part of... The other part of the county. And we have our... The other half to us. There is ability to grant. There is already, as soon as it's formed, the ability to seek significant dollars. There was... Wayne, do you remember, was it $6 million that was available?
A lot... Yes. All of you voted for nearly a billion dollars in water resource money. That's getting doled out.
I wouldn't say all of it.
Most of you. One more than half of you. So there is a lot of state money there. I... Don't tell me how annoying it is for them to tax us, take the money, tell us what to do, and give us the money back. I know that's annoying to everybody.
You say the county was given this money?
No. There is available money for GSAs. I think the money you're talking about is just administration.
Yes. The $250,000 that comes from us was money that was given to Kern County to do the administration beginning of the GSA.
Given to Kern County by who?
State.
State Department of...
Department of Water Resources.
I think it was Department of Water Resources.
Yeah. They're administering bond funds.
Yes, that was it.
Okay.
It's your money.
Well, it's still tax money, yeah.
Everything is tax money. Nobody develops it any other way, unfortunately. I'd like to print it.
I just want to emphasize once again that one of the things the State Water Control Board should be trying to attempt is to importing water across country if we need to. And don't tell me it's going to cost an arm and a leg, because I know that. But that arm and a leg, you know, may be a smaller arm and a leg if they just do their homework. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Rattor.
Stan Rattor. Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. I believe that the City of Ridgecrest should consider being an associate member of the GSA. And I've got multiple reasons for saying that. I... The number one reason is that, quite frankly, I don't believe that the City of Ridgecrest can afford to be a member, that is, a voting member as opposed to an associate member. We all know that we currently have significant budget The City of Ridgecrest alone has an overhead of $2.7 million a year. The GSA, if they claim that they're going to get by with $2 million for the next five years or whatever it is, I don't believe they're going to do that. The county is already complaining about them. That is, the county already absorbing all of the... all of the, the administrative costs. The county has indicated they don't want to do that anymore, so therefore, there's going to be pressure to put more and more on the other members of the GSA. And, and I guess at the same time, I'd like to point out that I don't believe that the county should be in charge of the finances for the GSA. Neither should the county be in charge of the legal representation of the GSA. With the county being in charge of those two different facets, obviously, it's going to be a county program. So, main objection, or main reason, I should say, to consider being an associate member is, we flat can't afford it. Second reason is that I don't believe that the citizens of Ridgecrest need another vote. The county represents all the citizens of Ridgecrest. The water district also covers all of the citizens of Ridgecrest. So there are already two different groups watching out for the best interest of the citizens of Ridgecrest. Obviously, the water district has got the most interest, my, my feeling is, to protect both the citizens and the water supply. Basically, the citizens of Ridgecrest are paying for this GSA, both through the county and they're paying for it right now through the water district. I, I don't believe that the citizens need to pay for it a third time. One of the reasons that the cities, actually, I think it was the county stated that they wanted the city to be involved was the police powers that the city has. My feeling is that the, each associate member has an MOU with the GSA or the JPA, however you want to phrase it, and we can do the same things with the police powers that the city has through that MOU without becoming a formal voting member. In theory, any associate member will have all rights and privileges except for the ability to vote. My feeling is that the water district and the county can do the job. I, I see no reason to believe that either the county or the water district are going to do anything that would be against the benefit of the citizens of, of Ridgecrest. So, my, my feeling is that before long, the, the cost is going to go up, up, and up, and we're going to find that we can't afford it. And, you know, I guess you can approach it two ways. You can join originally, and then as soon as a problem occurs, you can drop out or, or drop back to be an associate member, or you could go in now as an associate member. But my feeling is that we, we can't afford it. You know, I, I tend to agree with one of the prior speakers, is that to do the job and to do the job right, and that's what needs to be done, because it is important to us. I'm not, I'm not trying to minimize the importance of this to our valley, certainly to our valley, it's critical, and that's why we need to be on the board, but not necessarily as a voting member. But, but in my mind, our first priority ought to be to keep ourselves alive as a city, and second priority should be to support our economic growth, because there's other people going to be watching out for the, the water aspect. And, because frankly, if we don't have water, we're not going to grow, that's for sure, and the city will go away. So it's important for the city to look at what's important for the city, and my feeling is that today, economic growth is the most important thing for us. Any questions?
One thing it did say, that the cities had the land use and the sewer water. That was not just, not just water, but the land use authority, which gave them, which gives a city another option to be able to develop things potentially.
Well, no, you know, I'm, I'm all for using the wastewater in the very best means that we can, and, and my feeling is, we haven't done nearly enough in the current efforts to improve or modernize our wastewater system. But that said, we can work that through an MOU as well as part of the GSP. I, I don't think that that, we were required to be a formal voting and, more importantly, paying member to ensure that all that happens. I totally agree, that, that needs to happen. We need to put a lot more effort into recycled water. No question about that, no, no question in my mind. The, the issue is, what is it that we can do as a voting member that we can't do as an associate member? And, and quite frankly, as long as I trust the county and I trust the water district, I don't see any reason to take on that additional financial liability, when every year when we go through our budget, we, we squeak by, just barely. In fact, we, we still don't, we still don't know what happened to last year's budget in terms of how we ended up. So, anyway, just my two, my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Mead?
Good evening, council members. Mayor Breeden. My name's Elaine Mead. I've been before this council before. I would like, this evening, just, I have a disagreement with legal counsel and Mayor Breeden concerning when a representative of any of the agencies sit on the GSA, they will not be there as a member of their original board. Once they assume that position, they are now an independent agency. That is what the JPA is creating. One of the requirements of the JPA is independence. And the definition given by Department of Water Resource for that independence refers to the ability of a GSA to operate freely within its defined purview, protected from external pressures that could divert the GSA from achieving its fundamental goals. Its fundamental goals are not the city's objectives, or the county's objectives, or the water districts. It is the objective of the JPA to protect the basin. That is the function of the GSA. So, and this argument took place in this very chambers between Mr. Lemieux and county council, and Mayor Breeden and Supervisor Gleason.
Because the other Lemieux.
Pardon?
The other Lemieux.
About voting when the issue is presented at a GSA meeting, or being able to bring it back to the board. And that, you're supposed to vote at that meeting. You're supposed to be independent, and you're not supposed to be representing your board.
Can I respond? Or go ahead.
I understand, I want to understand this thoroughly before we go on.
Things don't magically appear on the agenda of the GSA, especially important things like the management plan. The management plan is going to take six, six months worth of meetings to consider it, after taking six months to draft. And during those six months, there'll be controversial items, and there'll be non-controversial items in the management plan, and whoever the representative is, isn't going to have to vote on the management plan one afternoon after three hours' notice. So that, during the course of the deliberations, remember, there's, SIGMA requires deliberations, the GSA representative for the city is going to come back here and say, I've got this choice to make. What do you guys think it's, I should do? And the GS, the, the city council has three things. They can say, do this, do that, or we don't know, do what you think is best. And the GSA representative from the city will do that. And if the GSA representative from the city doesn't express the council's policy, then there'll be a new GSA from the city. Now, that does not mean that the, the GSA is, is not independent. It's got a governing board, just as these councilmen are here, because they have opinions. That's how they got elected. And most of the people that voted for them said, we like your opinions, we want you to further them. So the GSA gets a, a member from here who's got an opinion, and it all gets thrashed out, and two out of, it's hard to express that, but three out of the five better agree or you don't have action. So I, I think you're, you're being just too theoretical here. These kinds of boards are, have existed throughout the state for years. One of the biggest examples is one of the largest governmental entities in the state, and that's the Metropolitan Water District. Its board of directors is composed of a couple of hundred people appointed by the twenty-eight member agencies, including the city of LA and some of our clients as well. Those directors are, are either director, elected officials from the member agencies or not, but they go to the metropolitan meeting, they make decisions all day long, but if they come up to an important decision that they think will affect their agency unusually, they bring it back to their agency. That's not their lack of independence, that's their sensitivity. Now, we're hearing two different arguments here. One is, the representative won't be reflective enough of the local community, and yet, and you're arguing they'll be too reflective of the, the local community.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, because the local community, as far as SIGMA is concerned, is the Indian Wells Valley water basin, and that's what we are looking at. Yes.
I'm disagreeing with you.
Okay. But it's, when, when you have to sit on that board and make a decision to charge for water that you're going to be pumping, that, I mean, this has been Supervisor Gleason's objection to having the mutuals on there, because they won't look at raising rates on themselves. Well, the water district and the city are going to be doing exactly that. They both pump water. Kern County does not. So when you sit there and look at, we're going to charge pump taxes, or whatever they're called, you're looking at applying that to yourself. Are you going to be objective? That's why it has to be an independent agency, and that's what SIGMA says.
SIGMA does not require that you import people without any interest in the community.
A JPA is an independent agency.
SIGMA does not require that you import people that are ignorant of the community, and that have no ties to the community. This is no different than having two state senators from California, it's two US senators from California go back to Washington and move around among all the others and represent the interests of the, they're supposed to represent the interests of the United States, but they also simultaneously represent the interests of California. That's what's going on here. It's not, if you get hung up in the theory, and I've heard a lot of theory tonight, but not much practicality, the, the theory is entirely consistent. We can be on the board, represent the interests of this community or not.
Here's my, my thought. It's no different than us, like, when we did the, the sewer fee increase. We live here, we have to pay that tax, so we had to do the same thing.
Exactly.
Choose to raise that. That, that's no different than serving on the GSA board. We already do that. So I, I don't understand your, your argument about that, that's what we take notice to do, and that's why we, we serve now.
I understand.
So it would be no different.
I understand that. My point being is that this JPA is forming an independent agency, separate from, it's not like you're bringing in members of the city to be city council. You're bringing in a representative from one agency into another one to create an independent, a separate body.
We do it all the time in committees and, and everything else. I, I'm not understanding.
But those committees come back to you.
And so will this. She, I, I'm just saying she, because Peggy goes to all the meetings. So, let's say she was appointed, we're going to sit up here like we are now, we're going to have these discussions, we're going to give her what our direction is, and then she's going to go and she's going to vote that way.
Whether I agree with it or not.
Yeah, because that's our decision.
That is their decision. Just like the water district said this very same thing. Everything will come back to their board and they will direct their repri, I mean, short of, are we going to meet Monday at ten o'clock? The important things, and again, as I said, we, I can't define them, but we all know what they are. It's like pornography. I can't define it, but I know exactly what it is when I see it. Well, I know those important issues, and if I'm, if anybody thinks that whoever is appointed is going to make arbitrary decisions without consulting this council, I hope they're kicked off.
Yeah.
I mean, they would, I would expect them to be.
So I, I think the point that.
I don't understand, I guess.
I think Mr. Porter was making the same point. Do they have to come back to the, to the council to, to get concurrence? No, they do not have to. But I, and I think I read it somewhere, I was looking for it, I couldn't find it. I think we have the option to, to replace our representative at any time.
With our.
And, and so if they, if, I mean, honestly, if they're not coming back to us for concurrence, I, I'm going to vote for replacement.
Okay. I have, I have one other question. It was my understanding when the JPA conversations first started, Keith said that he didn't want to update the council on a weekly or monthly basis, that he preferred to come back once the JPA was written, give you a presentation before you were voting on it. Is that not the plan?
Yes, tonight.
Is he not going to give a presentation on this?
Who is he?
Keith.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
We now have the agreement in front of you. The circumstances that have changed are, we're no longer in the position to be in the first one to, to comment on the agreement, and it's been negotiated six months, it seems like forever, but six months. So the agreement is in front of you tonight. We're asking for public input on the provisions of the agreement, which is distributed with the agenda.
Okay. So there's not going to be a presentation that says this is what's good about it, this, these are the concern areas, and.
I think we're doing that now.
Way one to the other, and then my final question would be, have each of you read the JPA in its entirety?
Start to finish.
I've skimmed it and read certain sections.
Pass me the.
Thank you very much.
Put me to sleep three times.
Thank you, Elaine. Is this different from what you sent us?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
What I gave, what I gave the clerk was a copy of the letter that we submitted yesterday, and, and good evening, Mayor Breeden and members of the council. My name is Derek Hoffman, and I'm an attorney at Gresham Savage, and our firm represents Meadowbrook Dairy and the Meadowbrook Mutual Water Company, which is one of the largest and oldest groundwater pumpers in the valley, with well-established rights to, to groundwater. And the reality is, what I'm about to say tonight is something that really won't surprise a lot of people in the room, because we've been saying this for months. And on behalf of Meadowbrook, we urge the city council not to approve the joint powers agreement in its current form. We submitted our comment letter yesterday, and as I mentioned, the copies I just handed out, which I hope you have in front of you tonight for your benefit and for your reference, details our concerns with the joint powers agreement, primarily regarding committees of the board, and specific. of the board, and specifically Section 7.04. So I would direct you there. Just by way of background, Kern County has led this process, and as Council Womu had said, it's been, it seems like it's been forever. Well, in the process of doing this, Kern County has systematically led this JPA drafting process in a way that systematically excluded private pumpers from the GSA formation process. And by doing that, is leading the county and leading the valley down a path of conflict. Initially, Kern County rejected Meadowbrooks and a few of the other pumpers' requests to be members of the JPA board with a voting right. And the city rejected that as well. So as an alternative way for establishing participation at the GSA, we explored the concept of a groundwater sustainability plan development committee, a GSP development committee. Now initially, an early draft of the joint powers agreement stated that mutual water companies and other private pumpers would have the ability to participate on a groundwater sustainability plan development committee. And then in March, we saw notes from the closed GSA formation meetings. One of those notes stated, and these are comments made by Kern County representatives, it says, the vision is that the GSA staff will prepare a draft GSP, that the GSP formulation will lie with staff and not the development committee, that the GSP development committee is really a citizens advisory committee. And on that same day, it's no coincidence that the JPA that was released to the public had been revised and had actually deleted the words from that section regarding a groundwater sustainability plan development committee. And now today, the draft that you have in front of you of the joint powers agreement, particularly Section 7.04, likewise does not establish clearly a groundwater sustainability plan development committee. Now, I know that comments that will come back to me are, well, there is a committee, and it talks about mutual water companies. Well, the committees that are defined in the language of this agreement refer to committees that can be dissolved by the JPA board at any time. And it also provides nothing about the membership, the purposes, or the functions of those committees. It's very broad. And in the context of the quotes I just read you, we see the pattern over time of that committee concept is being eroded entirely, to the point where we have no reasonable assurance as private pumpers that we will have any legitimate participation, let alone meaningful participation on the GSA, as a, on a committee of the GSA. So what you'll see in your, in your letter, in your packet, as attachment A to our letter, the very last page, is proposed language. It's just a red line of the JPA, Section 7.04, and it proposes language that would more clearly define meaningful participation. Right now, the JPA says you'll get meaningful participation by being on a committee. And as I just said, the committees don't, they're not defined. So what we've proposed is language that more clearly defines meaningful participation for private pumpers by establishing a groundwater sustainability plan development committee and establishes its general membership, purposes, and functions. And you'll notice that our proposal would include all the public agency JPA members on this committee. It would include the city, for example, as well as the JPA associate members, some of the large private pumpers like Meadowbrook, and even small domestic well owner representation. We've tried to be very broad and inclusive in this concept. And so I just want to step back for a moment. And I know that it's been a long night, it's been a long process so far, but what the valley does not have time for is to form an inadequate JPA. It doesn't have time to form an inadequate GSA that fails to establish meaningful participation for all groundwater users in the basin. Now, the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority will be held accountable under Sigma and under the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Regulations for the extent to which it includes and engages pumpers in the basin. Now, Mr. Womu mentioned a moment ago that there are JPA's all over the state, and he is correct. And yet, interestingly, recently, there was a report on JPA's in Kern County specifically. It was a Kern County grand jury report, bearing the signature of Kern County Council. And in that report, it calls out flaws with this joint powers agreement. The report is entitled Hidden Governments, and it identifies issues with the fact that many JPA's in this county fail to provide sufficient representation for those individuals that it governs. And I think this here is an example of what we're talking about. Now, just stepping to the other side of the room here, I will say that litigation would guarantee meaningful participation for all pumpers in the basin. By definition, it would, it would establish meaningful participation. But of course, that would come at an extreme cost to all involved, and I don't think anybody wants that. The Endlook Valley Groundwater Judication just took 19 years to get to a trial court judgment at a cost of tens of millions of dollars. And the appeals are just getting started in that case. And you've heard a lot of concerns tonight from your constituents about the budget, about the cost of this process. Now, no one wants litigation in this valley. But the more that the private pumpers, large and small, are excluded from the Sigma process, the more the litigation alternative presents itself. I'll just close with a few comments. Again, we urge the council not to adopt the joint powers agreement in its current form. And we'd ask you to carry a motion today to require immediate revision of the agreement that would clearly define meaningful participation by incorporating the changes in Exhibit A to our letter. And doing this will put us on a path of collaboration rather than a path of conflict, which is where this is, I believe, headed. Now, Mrs. Thomas mentioned earlier today that Kern County, ironically, was battling for inclusion in GSAs on the west side of the county, and that they are fighting to get included in that process. And I heard Kern County Council say that when she was told by Kern River GSA representatives that the county would be able to participate meaningfully, she said she would require a robust definition of meaningful participation. And that statement is dripping with irony, because that is exactly what we're asking for. That's exactly what we've been asking for for months, just to find it. Organizing the GSA is supposed to be the easy part of this Sigma process. And as Mr. Womu mentioned a moment ago, developing the groundwater sustainability plan will be much more challenging. And it'll be especially more challenging if the joint powers authority fails to legitimately include private pumpers, large and small, in the process of developing and implementing the GSP for the Indian Wells Valley. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will very thoughtfully consider the issues before you vote on this tonight. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment?
My name is Sophia Merk, and I'm speaking for myself only, not as any other group or anything. I do have concerns about meaningful participation. I believe that many of the people in this community will be excluded. And the city council needs to be aware that there are other people that are going to be excluded. So I really think that maybe adding, what, I forget his name, but maybe adding his thoughts and taking that up with Kern County might be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Matthews.
Yes, Mayor. The gentleman, the lawyer, I didn't catch his name, but I have a question. Since the agency or authority is already formed, what good is it going to do the city not to join it? Now, are you guys planning to do a challenge or something to the authority? It sounds like the west side is having the same problem. So what good is it do for the city not, not to join it? I don't, I don't know.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Whitneck.
I just want to add one thing. Stan, I agree with you on a lot of things, but not tonight. I'm sorry. With, when he stood here and said that you should be an associate member and not sitting as a voting member on this board, I can't disagree any stronger than right here and now. All I could, he said, we can trust the county and the Water District to care about us. I ask you one thing. A roomful of people down here throwing a fit about closing the jail. That is not representation of the county caring about us. I want one of you on that board making the decisions for us at equal authority as the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitneck. Is there any other public comment? Renee.
Good evening. Renee Westalosk and I live within Ridgecrest City Limits. I support you voting for this. According to a rough estimate that I've done, 75% of the population of this valley lives in the city of Ridgecrest. We deserve as much representation on the GSA board as possible. I think it would be irresponsible, sort of, if you don't step forward and participate. We need to be at the forefront of all representation. The population base is too, too great to be left out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Chip.
I knew you couldn't sit through a whole meeting without speaking. I absolutely have tried to avoid this issue with Donna trying to get me involved, Lane trying to get me involved. So I admit that I'm not up to speed on this issue in a meaningful way to give expert opinion. Even Mr. McQuiston has tried to keep me involved, and I've resisted. But as a former council member, having this attorney come up here and talk about litigation and litigation that lasted for 19 years, and you're fixing to sign on board to an open-ended agreement where you have no, no way of knowing the future of what the liability of this city could be on something like one single litigation action, I would be terrified. So I think at a minimum, you need to define your responsibilities in that type of action. But that'd be my two cents worth from 16 years of sitting in your position.
I'll offer just a brief comment there.
Please.
Sigma was, one of the primary reasons for adopting Sigma was to do away with groundwater adjudications that last 13 to 16 years and cost millions of dollars. It's fundamentally a legislative approach. It's more like a zoning commission than a litigation. And the hope is that these GSAs will facilitate management stronger, faster, and cheaper. That's one of the reasons why I and every other good attorney doesn't like it.
Can you address one thing? And I was looking for it here, and I can't remember how it, how it talks about if, if an adjudication after the formation of Sigma and the approval of the state, if an adjudication procedure is filed, it is set aside until, am I understanding this correctly?
Well, boy, that's a really complicated question. And if you give me half an hour, I'll give you a really nice answer. But the idea is, allow me to talk in generalities. If a GSA is formed and adjudication is filed, the court is encouraged to stay the adjudication to give the GSA a chance to act. Is it mandatory that there be no court decree? No, it's not mandatory, but for various technical reasons, an adjudication that has no practical impact whatsoever once a GSA is formed. And Derek, I hope I didn't challenge you too much there. We will disagree on that maybe.
One of the things I would like to say about this is the word meaningful participation. This is no good without meaningful participation of everybody. That means whether the well owners, whether the RCD, whether private individuals, whether entities, we all work together. It is us making it work for us. Now, how you define that, I think you limit the participation by saying A, B, C, and D all must participate. But what about E, F, and G? How do you define that meaningful participation if it isn't everybody? Everybody working together on committees? All of us know, who've worked on committees, how sometimes difficult it is to work together because the committees are all going different ways. We are going one way to solve our water issues, solve them well, solve them fairly, and solve them evenly. I see no way that we can participate at all without meaningful participation. And when you start pointing out you may, but you're not listed, so therefore you can't. We simply say it is all. It is us. There is nobody, and I've said it again and again and again, nobody who knows us better than us. I urge us to look at finding ways to work more closely together, finding ways to bring, I want to see Meadowbrook, I want to see Mojave Pistachios, I want to see all of them. That's why they are part of the groundwater management group. I am so pleased to be a part of that group that has recognized the value of having participations from well owners, from farmers, from ordinary people, from governmental entities, because you have set the path. Our path is to work together. It's as simple as that, to solve our own problems ourselves with our participation. Is it going to be tempting for someone to file a lawsuit, perhaps? Are we going to do anything to encourage that? Absolutely not. Are we going to address the issues that they face? We must, because again, it is us. Somebody told me to come up here and keep your mouth shut tonight. Well, I'm sorry. I say what I think, I believe in what I say, and I believe we know ourselves better than anybody else. So is there any other public discussion? Is there any other private, I'm not private. Yeah, let's all go private. Is there any other council discussion?
Wise man once told me, never resist the temptation to keep your mouth shut. I try very hard. I don't always succeed. The, if we don't participate, because that's what we're talking about tonight, if we don't have a seat at the table, we can't participate and help do all of those things, because it's already there, whether we talk about it or not. I think that we need to participate because we are elected to represent the public. I think that those of us who are elected officials, because we're here at, at the will of the public to represent the public, and that's what makes that work. Does that mean that nobody else has a voice? No. I agree with everything that you've said. Some parts of this work really well, and some of it I'm still like, mm. But irregardless, we can't do anything if we're not there and participating. And that was what our agenda item is tonight. So that, that kind of sums it up for me, at least where we're at tonight, is we need to participate.
Is there any other council comment?
Yeah. I've got a lot of comments here. So let me get a few kind of technical questions out of the way, then I'm going to get on my soapbox for a minute. Somebody mentioned the, who's in charge of finances and legal. Who is in charge of finance and legal in the GSA?
Well, right now, there's seed money that's been, most of it's been provided by the county, and we're asked to make an initial contribution. The administrative costs traditionally are separated from the actual management costs. The administrative costs are going to seem small compared to the management costs. County's prepared a draft budget. They believe it's probably a two, one or two-person organization, and that's probably right. The big expense, I have to give you detail, because everything's in the detail. The big expense would be the groundwater management plan. That's got to be prepared by a technician at a cost of, I don't know, a million dollars, half a million dollars, kind of depends. It's going to be reviewed by everybody. The city engineer's going to look at it, the Water District engineer's going to look at it, private parties are going to look at it. Those costs are going to be borne by those people. And then there'll be hearings and discussions, that's back to the administrative costs again. Then there'll be, after adoption, an implementation phase, and probably some water will have to be bought, but will be the phase, and probably some water will have to be bought, but will be the pump. So it's going to bounce around. The management plan is probably going to be paid for by the state. If it's not, it's going to be kind of a skinny plan. You just do what you can afford, right? So it's going to be paid by different, it's going to zigzag back around. Nobody can be asked to pay more than they can afford because they can't afford it.
Okay. And that kind of goes into my next question, is money, so I know right now we're just, this is just seed money, the fifteen thousand. Do we have any realistic idea of how much we're going to be required to spend? I mean, how long is the fifteen thousand going to last? And any guesses as to how much we need to spend hereafter?
It hasn't been determined that I know of. It's just estimates, because without knowing how easily we will be able to come up with a plan is going to be, as Wayne said, that coming up with a plan is the biggest cost, I think. And developing the administration, you've got to remember, whatever the figure was you quoted that the state made available to groundwater JPAs that could seek those funds to help it being done, was it, I don't know, I heard eight million, but potentially for each.
Remember, the joint powers authority has to have meaningful participation before they decide how they want to finance their operation.
Okay.
I can say that these kinds of things are normally financed by some levy against pumping. You pump more, you pay more. There's some fairness to that, but I can see arguments against that, and those arguments will be presented. So there's seed money, there's state money, there's money from pumpers, there's money from something else. There'll be a lot of sources. And I don't want to say trust them, but just lawyers just don't say those two words. It calls proximity. But the, it's going to be a JPA decision ultimately.
Okay. So this is, yeah, and that's, I don't know, I guess it's concerning for me to not understand, I mean, how do we plan our budgets? I have no idea how this is even going to fit into the budget.
You're in the same boat as everyone.
Yeah, and I think fifteen, fifteen thousand isn't a big deal. We can handle that right now. But mostly, I'm worried about what the next payment's going to be and when.
But remember, you have the ability to pull out of this at any time.
Yeah, that's true.
And you'll be part, you'll be in there arguing about what the next payment should be.
Okay.
And the water district's going to be more in the same boat as you are than the counties, I guess.
Yeah.
In fact, all the government agencies that comprise this entity are kind of strapped for cash. So I don't think there's going to be profligate spending.
Yeah. So, okay, before I get a, let me back up here. The biggest concern I have about the JPA in general, and this is, this is not something anybody could really answer, but I want to vocalize this. I'm, I don't know what direction this JPA is going to go in, in terms of how do we solve the problem, because are we even going to first try to define the problem? And has there been discussion in that?
Well, clearly, the problem is sustaining the groundwater level. That is what it is. And for most areas in the basin, the water continues to drop. Some areas significantly, some not so much. But I don't think there's too much disagreement that for the most part of the basin, the water's dropping. So the goal is, in that twenty years, to make the groundwater sustainable, so that we are not continuing to drop, and that we find ways to make that happen. How we're going to do that, that's going to be something we're going to do together.
No, I understand that. But is the goal going to be further research to understand?
Yeah, we only have to define, I mean, Wayne referred to that, go ahead, you said that.
Yeah, the plan will have stages. The first stage is how much water do we have every year naturally filling the basin? The answer to that, I guess, is not much. How much water's being pumped out right now? The answer to that is quite a lot. How much can we reduce pumping to get towards balance? That's kind of tricky, but I don't know if the farmers are using best technology for irrigation. I hope so, but we don't know that. And is there a way to supplement the water supply? We mentioned the city of LA, and I'm very pessimistic about them, but everybody in the, mainly central California, not so much southern California, are kind of in the same boat. Some of these solutions are huge solutions. There's a water agency we represent in Redondo Beach that is preparing, getting into desalinization right now. So it's crazy that California has a shortage and an ocean both. There's technical issues with desalination, they're minor. It costs a lot right now. So the way this would work is, Redondo Beach desalinates, no longer takes water from the Metropolitan Water District. Metropolitan Water District has more water to give the city of LA, one of its member agencies. City of LA doesn't need as much water on the state project. It can drop some off here. So there's one, two, three, four, five in there. That might require the Indian Wells GSA to buy what, desalinated water.
So, no, I understand, it's.
It's a big pot that gets stirred up. People have to want to do it.
Yeah, there's a variety of different solutions. I just want to make sure we're not heading into an organization that is, you know, full of solutions looking for a problem. Do we fully understand the problem, and are we going to do more research to discover that before we propose solutions?
Those things I sent you from the groundwater management group have defined many of the problems and potentially the paths to find solutions. And they're available, we meet the third Thursday of every month at one o'clock, and it's available online at the IWWG Groundwater Management Group's website, and all of the possibilities that are available. And it's a lot of research that can be done and is being, looking to be done right now, being funded by the water district, the Navy, and Searl's Valley.
Yeah. Okay. Again, this is me vocalizing my concerns.
I appreciate that.
Mostly. So the one, last question here, and I'll be done. We've mentioned police powers many times in this meeting. I'm having a hard time understanding exactly how police powers are, I mean, what's an example of how police powers would be used in a GSA and what?
The chief, please? No. Police, that term is confusing. Police power, as you think of cops and robbers. But the, what we're referring to is a governmental power, a legislative power.
Okay.
And the GSA has a legislative power delegated by, you know, the whole story. The legislative power to adopt a groundwater management plan and adopt rules and regulations to implement that plan. And those rules and regulations have to be followed. If they're not followed, that legislative power can be enforced the same way as zoning ordinances are enforced. Take a trip down to the courthouse. So police power, technically, that's a police power, but just think of it as a government or legislative power.
Okay. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
I just got, I think, one. And I'm just trying to understand, and that's, I'm listening kind of close, and that is, the, what position does Sigma really have in reference to power? What's the overall scheme they play in this, this whole ordeal? Can they come in and regulate anything, or should they regulate anything once we formulate this or sign to be a part of this?
Yeah, the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, the GSA, there was a comedian once said, I'm going to join the AFL-CIO, because everyone I CIO. There's too many letters here. The Groundwater Sustainability Agency will adopt a management plan for the basin within our lifetime, and they have the power to enforce that management plan. It might say, don't pump on Tuesday. It might say, use recycled water when it's available. Or it might say, let's buy some desalinated water. It's going to say something. And that agency, like most governmental agencies, has the power to implement their decisions.
So if we're not on council in the next ten years, do they have, do they have the ability to raise things or to make it more difficult?
If you're not on the council?
Oh, I'm sure I will be here ten years from now.
You mean, if we're not on that Board of Directors?
Correct.
If you're not on that Board of Directors, you're not going to vote on what they do.
So that we would just accept whatever?
Whatever it is they come up with is what you end up with.
So does it behoove us to put some language in there to cover us or no?
In what respect?
Well, I know you and the other attorney was talking about adding.
I wasn't talking about adding language.
I was going to clean it up first, sir.
No, no.
The other attorney was talking about cleaning, maybe putting some other additional language in there.
I recommend against that. We can negotiate the language in this agreement until the cows come home, especially a term like meaningful participation. Tonight, you had meaningful participation in this subject. How would you have described that in words? It's very difficult. Meaningful participation is everybody gets heard who wants to be heard. Not everybody wants to be heard, but everybody who wants to be heard gets heard. That doesn't mean you agree with everybody that expresses an opinion. And I can guarantee you, if somebody expresses a heartfelt opinion that is not accepted, that person will not feel he or she has had meaningful participation. That's just the way humans are. So I would not change meaningful participation. It's fine. It's a little unsettling. It's like, a lot of things in the law require you to act reasonably. What the heck does that mean? Well, you kind of know what it means in the end.
So your recommendation is the role, the way it is?
Yes.
Mike?
Well, I understand Chip's concern about an opening. We don't know what the costs are going to be, but I don't think we can afford not to be a part of this. I kind of agree with just about everything we already said. Boy, for a change, just about everything we already said. So I'm ready to vote on it.
Okay.
One more question. Is it fair to say we really don't have the ability to change any of the language right now? I mean, it.
Well, yeah, I don't want to offend anybody, but everybody else has approved it. If you want to change it, you have to convince everyone else that they ought to unzip it and start over. And it's not like this was casually developed. There's been a lot of discussion.
But this is the first time it's been, it's come to the city council as a whole, I believe.
Yeah, first time for a vote. It's been out there for a while.
Yeah.
You've all seen it.
And believe me, we're, just as we're not happy as we're, what do I want to say? We would have written some sentences in here different and some paragraphs different, but so would everyone else. This is one of those compromise things. It's like, it's like the Constitution. There's some things in the Constitution that needed to be changed, and after a few years, they were.
And that's kind of where I was going to go with this. If, right now, I think our only recourse to change language in the agreement is to join and then propose amendments. Because right now, I mean, I think August fifteenth was the latest date we can join, right? So we're up against a deadline again.
Well, because the first people adopted it, and then you had the timeframe going after the first adoption.
Yeah, but I, when was the first adoption? I don't.
The water district did it less than a month ago. Well, less than a month.
Oh, is it that soon? I thought it was sooner than that.
Jim, if we don't join, we can't propose changes.
Exactly. So I'm for joining, but I do have reservations about this whole thing. So I'm not proposing anything different.
Okay.
We do have an escape clause.
Exactly.
Okay.
Hanging on to my life.
Are we ready to call a question?
How about I make a motion?
I'll second.
Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
All approve.
Okay, the next item. I lost my paper. I've got so many here.
Nominating the appointees.
Okay, that's it. Okay, motion to nominate an appointed member and an alternate member. Discussion. Mr. Lemieux?
Well, you need some nominations. Normally, Robert's Rules of Order doesn't require nominations to be seconded, but your vote has to be public because of the Brown Act.
I'll just nominate. I can do that, right? Because I'd like to nominate Peggy. You're already going to the meetings anyway as our representative.
I'd like to second that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's, I think she's.
Do we want to do an alternate at the same time?
I would suggest you do them separately.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no other nominations, there can be a motion that needs a second to close nominations.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Now, you vote on the motion to close nominations?
Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
All approve.
Now, vote on the nomination. Now, select somebody.
Are you doing this for fun?
No, 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 I'm sorry, but.
We just closed the nominations. There's only one nominee.
I didn't know we had to vote to close nominations.
Well, you still need to vote.
Okay.
No, that's nominee, I mean, we still need to nominate the alternate.
But first, we've got to vote on the nominating Peggy.
Okay, so we'll vote on this one, then, okay.
All you've done is close nominations.
We're ready.
She's typing.
This was a vote to close nominations.
Actually, I think this will be good because we can have a voice for change.
Okay, so do we have a motion for, to approve the nomination?
Just vote on the nomination.
We're just voting now because I did that part, because I motioned for Peggy to be the nominee.
Yeah.
Mike seconded it.
Peggy's the nominee. The question is, who's going to vote for her?
We're going to vote for that nomination.
Yeah.
Okay, so do I just do the roll call?
Roll call.
Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
Now, do the alternate.
Is there someone that wants to volunteer as the alternate?
I would like to be the alternate.
I nominate, I nominate Jim.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Close the nominations.
So move to close nominations?
Second.
Jim Sanders, sir.
Is the alternate Peggy is?
Sure.
To close alternate nominations, Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
All approve. And now, vote on the alt.
Because, see, somebody might be fine up to now, just not want to vote yes.
Okay, and so to approve the alternate nomination, Councilmember Maurer?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye, yes. Starting, because it screwed me up.
Okay.
We're not tired and punchy at all.
Laura, you have the same feeling I did, just vote no just because he challenges.
Okay, the next item is committee reports. City Org, Lori and Mike.
Peggy.
I know.
We did meet, and.
You and I met, yeah.
We discussed the broadband and really have not made any progress at all on there. It's kind of disappointing. And then we discussed Jason, and he's going to present a proposal to the city for.
He has, he is also, he is writing a letter to the PUC and to Commissioner Sandoval, who is, and they are, then he's going to bring it to us, but he's asking the broadband committee to look at it first, come back to us. but he's asking the broadband committee to look at it first, come back to us.
But then, also, he's gonna make a presentation to us about...
Regarding, on this present...I'm sorry, on this letter, what is it regarding?
It is regarding trying to see if the PUC will have any influence with the ISP providers in the state who are basically saying, "We don't care to serve you."
We had a government roundtable meeting on that two years ago, up there, and we're still not...
And they're not doing anything.
No, yeah, okay.
So, that's our asking for defined action.
I know, it's...
He's gonna make a presentation to the council also, for public relations.
Yep.
Then, there was a third item, I don't remember what it was.
I need to forward up the latest government newsletter on broadband, so I will do that as well.
Okay. That's it?
Okay. Ad hoc Water Committee is not meeting right now, so, we are going to skip that and go to...
You skipped infrastructure.
I'm sorry, I did, my apologies.
Real quick, on the Isle House Water Committee. Have you run into Peter Brown at all? He was giving us the estimates.
He has been very, very ill.
Yeah, I know.
So, he isn't doing it right now, but what he's gone to, with Jason, was some ideas.
Okay.
And possibilities of how to look at solving the water problems in the...in the city as far as how we can conserve water from the city's usage. Like, we had talked about Denny's Park.
Right.
And that's where they are right now.
Okay.
Okay, infrastructure, I...
We discussed the sewer line replacement, which we voted on tonight. And then, we had a real thorough presentation on the status of Walmart. As you recall, they were gonna close Bowman Road until May second. And they're gonna close Bowman Road until August. Now, they're gonna keep Bowman Road closed until October, because they've run into a lot of utility problems in the crossing of Channel Lake Boulevard. So, they are on schedule to have everything, the building and all the improvements, offsite improvements done by October seventh, is that...seventh? And that was quite a lengthy, detailed presentation, showing us all the right turn lanes and double left turn lanes, and very thorough on the city engineer's part.
So, how far are they out of schedule? Are they on schedule?
Four months. They're about four months off schedule, on the offsites.
Okay.
They're right on schedule on the building itself, so...
Okay. Now, parks and...
Now, you can go.
And quality of life. Have you all met?
No, no, ma'am.
I'm concerned, this committee has never met.
No, we met once.
You met once?
Yes, sir. You were on vacation, you missed it.
You actually met once, huh?
Well, it's Eddie and Lori.
But we did. We had a meeting about not meeting, no.
Had a meeting about not meeting.
No, we actually...it did take some things to talk to him about, and all of this stuff is coming before councils. There really hasn't been anything, because he's been busy trying to work at...to have fund projects and stuff, and he does a presentation to council, we haven't had anything specific.
And plus, a lot of it was dealing with our kids, as well, in reference to schooling. Because a lot of the work that they were doing was based upon activities of kids.
Okay. Speaking of kids, that's the next meeting.
That's true.
Ad hoc youth.
You're meeting the second Wednesday of each month.
Yeah, they're gonna be kicking back up once school gets going, Madam Mayor.
The Action Committee, third Tuesday of every other month, is this the every other month?
No, I thought that was twice a year, three...
Yeah.
Biannually, right?
Okay, it says third Tuesday of...
Yeah, we need to change that, it's supposed to be biannually.
Okay. All right, RACBB, I see we have a report up here.
I don't know if you need to really read that, do you? I guess put it in the rec...put it in the record.
For the public, yes.
For the public, yes. Gotta get my glasses adjusted here. The director's report for the RACBB...God, my brain just stopped. The IRS determined Patrick Cliff Education Foundation exempt from federal income tax under the Internal Revenue Code. The off-road clubs, both regional and local, are looking and interested in bringing a Jeep club up for a weekend, we're looking at April or March of 2017. And the old Highway 395 sign was taken down and removed.
Yeah, I saw a picture of Tom Wicknick on a backhoe.
And his seven crew of guns for us, as well as the new Highway 395 sign, also has its electricity on for lights at night. So, but, Tom, thank you very much, appreciate it. The Confederate Air Force in Florida, I guess Doug is speaking to them regarding bringing the rebuilt Doc B-29 plane to Ridgecrest for the Blue Angels Air Show on March seventeenth and eighteenth, in case you missed that that was coming. They're gonna update their booth display, the RACBB is for the trade shows. And their Film Commission has submitted eight nominations at this year's California On-Location Awards, or the COLAS, for Federal Employee of the Year, Location Professional Commercial, there's four of those, Location Professional TV Series One Hour, there's one of those, and two professional music videos, kinda cool. For the month of June, there was a total of two productions for the Ridgecrest Film Commission at Indian current airport, there was also one production for a June of filming. And the next meeting will be Wednesday, September seventh, at the Kern McKee Center.
And, ma'am, if you don't mind, Ms. Laurie, also wanted to let the public know, it just came to my mind that Mr. Doug Luke is also a board member of the Film Commission. So, he's been promoted to that as well.
Oh.
So, we have a voice there as well.
Yay.
Okay. All right, any other committee boards or commissions, okay?
Yeah, I'm playing catch-up with the BLM, so...because we did meet on our Thursday. And just to give you the information, now that I have it pulled up, for the meeting, for the Green Sticker Fund, because basically what happens is, this is gonna sunset. And once it does, the state already...we've had this fight before, but their new director that was appointed for the Parks Department wants to hear from us. It is at the Doubletree Hotel by the Hilton Ontario Airport from six to nine p.m. on Thursday, August eleventh. So, please come, and there's 1.5 million of us, just in the green sticker. But, again, you have no idea how much this money is used locally, and what the impact to Ridgecrest truly is. And as a person who is out there with the racers, who has been doing this a long time, and knows the impacts, and have brought races here, if you take a trophy tech race, an off-road race with the vehicles that we've done, you've seen them up at Kmart, and we...okay, so, we do tech up there. It's $5,000 per crew, and we have 200 teams. That's how much money comes into the town on one of those weekends. So, it's a big deal, and we don't want this to go away, because we have to restore stuff, and we have to educate, and we do all of those things with the money that we pay in our stickers, that we set aside, because we, the voters, said we wanna do this. So, it's important, please make your voice heard.
What are they gonna do with the money?
They're gonna give it to a different department, who doesn't manage the money they have now, and can't manage the money they have now, millions of dollars of it, like they did two years ago. Yeah, it's just gonna fall under state parks, it's gonna come out of the designated fund that we decided we wanted it in, in 1972, when we voted for it. So, they're just gonna give it to state parks to generally use wherever they want, that they can't manage their money now. Yeah, it's bad, it's ugly. It could be a lot uglier, I mean, but it's gonna head that way if it continues. The other thing that many of you probably didn't realize is that, in the Erskine Fire, we have actual wilderness, did you all know that? That we have wilderness back there, behind us, and I don't mean all the way over to the Kern River Valley, I mean, up at the tip, up here. So, our forest area actually burned in part of the...in the Erskine Fire. We have, like, 4% left, I think. And so, that sounds so weird every time I say that, the wilderness in the forest for Ridgecrest, but we do have it, and it did burn. And our BLM has been very, very active with a lot of, all of the wildland fires, as you know. I know there was something else, but I can't think, so, that's it for my committee meetings, I hope.
Okay, any other committee meetings? Okay, I went to the Kern Cog meeting in place of Mike last Thursday, and I had put in your box the information that's available on bike paths. I think that's a golden opportunity, it goes along with the Blue Zone, and there's big money available, because they're looking to develop that even more, and roads are kinda taking a second place to those kind of opportunities. And so, I would like one of the committees to follow up on that, and Mike, if you could work, if you wanna take it in your committee or something?
It makes sense in infrastructure.
Because it's such a huge opportunity.
In fact, it was suggested, I think, of infrastructure, pursue maybe a bike path along the north side of Indian current road.
Right.
So, I think we'd have to have Navy approval, don't they own everything north of Indian current road? Caltrans has some right away there?
Indian current road, yes, it's 178.
Yeah.
But, I mean, how much right-of-way do they have north of the actual road? Up to the fence of...
No, I'm not really sure, but if you're talking about a Type 1, that could probably be accommodated with just...just with the Navy. Because I'm sure Navy has, you know, plenty of property, but that is another discussion.
There's a fence there, I don't know if Navy owns any property outside the fence, or just everything inside the fence.
I only wanna speculate, I was gonna say, I think it's all inside, but I know that's not exactly true.
We should invite Tim Fox to our next infrastructure...
He's not here anymore.
He's gone.
He's retired.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Who's his replacement?
We don't have one yet.
Oh, really? Okay, well, we'll talk to someone in the Navy, see if they can come at the next infrastructure committee.
Okay, any...the other one. Admiral McGinn, who you've heard me talk about, has sent a letter to the city and to the base, asking if we can find ways for intergovernmental support agreements with state and local governments. He's proposing that, and Dennis and I, we had asked if we could get together and talk about opportunities, not necessarily to go one way, but go both ways. But I wanna see if we can get some of these dollars that the Navy has available for projects and opportunities. I know they're not standing there with their hands out and say, "Here, take my money," but if we make good proposals, they're available. And we have a meeting we need to set up, Dennis, with them. So, if we can work on that. Captain Wiley and I have spoken a couple of times, and we think there is golden opportunities here, and we met last Friday and talked about how we work more closely, what we can do, and we are going to proceed with that even more fully. And especially with the ideas of making our businesses known to those new people that come into the base. Last year, we did one event, I'd like to see us do another one, where we have the businesses together and show the people, the new people coming into the base, what we have to offer them. And so, we're gonna work more fully with that, with the new PAO officer, and with Captain Wiley also, and Melissa Fennell, too. So, that's what I have on that, and that's...oh, the next GSA full meeting is going to be here at the City of Ridgecrest, and I believe we have settled on a date that is gonna be the eighteenth of August at 10 o'clock. And everyone is invited, it'll be a first open, totally, everybody participates, meeting, and to see where we go from there. So, I invite everyone to be here Thursday, the eighteenth, 10 o'clock, and it will be televised. Okay, that's all I have for right now. City Managers' Report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, there are just a few things. One is a follow-up on this bike path that was mentioned. As you...as I mentioned, in the infrastructure committee, the Kern Council of Governments has retained a consultant to do bike paths for all the incorporated cities that don't have adopted bike path plans. And the kickoff teleconference meeting is tomorrow to explain that, they're gonna set the parameters, they're gonna sort of...the consultant's gonna identify exactly what the scope of work is gonna be, but it does include at least workshop, one workshop in our city, to gather input for an overall citywide master bike plan. And the distinction between the bike plans that are identified in the general plan, that's what we may like, or what we...may have been desirable for the update in the original general plan, but that doesn't take into account what could actually physically be built in the field, and that's what'll be a part of this bike plan that will eventually be prepared for adoption. Now, the importance of adopted bike plan is that entitles you to state money. That's the reason we haven't been unsuccessful, or actually, it's not unsuccessful, we're not allowed to apply for state bike money right now, because we don't have an adopted bike plan. So, this is something that is being done countywide by this Kern Cog consultant for the incorporated cities that have not yet adopted a bike plan. Secondarily, on...from the standpoint of Kern Council of Governments, they are conducting a CMAC workshop next week to, you know, further explain the best way to present your applications for the...to be successful in the CMAC process. And then, just as a point of information, we have begun our outreach, we are...we don't advocate for the new measure that's to replace Measure L, but we have a team that officially kicked off last night, outreach to the organizations. And the chief isn't here, but I think that his administrative secretary has already set us up with between 20 and 30 organizational meetings that go...they're gonna keep us pretty busy through the month of August to end of September, and I know that we're not stopping there, we'll be continuing them as we set up meetings with the different fraternal and service organizations and other community organizations with regarding the importance and the impact that Measure L has made, and would continue to make with the renewal of whatever letter that particular measure has...is, as far as the letter that's given, and as I understand it, a drawing that takes place in mid-August.
August 18.
August 18.
The Secretary of State will draw it.
And I'm gonna get out my...the different funding that we would be eligible for through the military programs. I have met with every commander of the Public Works Department, except for Longbottom, I don't think, because I've shown those to him, but the way that works is, it's money that would come to the community, but all those applications have to be initiated by the base. And every time I met, every time I explained the programs, they were gonna get right on it, but that never happened.
Okay, well, we do know that Captain Wiley is leaving in December, and so, he wants to get this up and done soon. So, we need to set up a time, so...okay. Next item is Mayor and Council comments. Jim, you wanna start first, and we'll get on this way?
You know, I don't have any specific comments right now. I've talked enough tonight.
All right, Lori? Just a couple, and Dennis, I have a question. We had started working on a trails plan with the county, can you help me with follow-up on that? Because I have no idea where it has gotten off track and gone. The Trails Plan? Was I...
OHV?
Mm-hmm. Well, it wasn't just OHV.
That's with the county or BLM?
No, well, both, but we had worked with the county, because they had set up funding, and they hired a consultant, and it was all, you know, wonderful. But prior to that, Officer Myers, oh my gosh, all of our OHV crew here. We'd gone through the maps, laid out the trails, dealt with stuff that we needed to do on our end, and then they...Lori brought in the consultant, and just, I can't get anywhere, and I know they're busy at the county, and I understand that, but I'm like, "Guys, I need some answers."
Okay, well, it gives me a point of contact, so...
Okay. I would greatly appreciate that. Just a couple of reminders, the Citizens Police Academy starts tomorrow, and school, for those of you who don't have little ones or grandkids, to remind you that school is starting here in the next week or two, so, well, it's still very hot out, little ones will be crossing the roads again and stuff, so just be vigilant.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and that's it for tonight, I'm tired, girl. Have a good night to y'all, too.
I have three things I'd like to bring up. One, Dennis, we talked about the goals that the previous council had done. Would you get those to us, so we can begin to see what they did?
Yes, I'll get those to you probably in the next couple of weeks, but the issue is, is we're...right now, we're preparing very much for our...
I know.
As far as our outreach, also negotiating with the...in terms of the agreement that the Navy sent us, as far as the easement... the easement. Had a long discussion, had about an hour and a half discussion with our, one of our attorneys yesterday, and I still have to run that by our city attorney, but the bond counsel was explaining the reasons why that's completely unacceptable. We went over what he would recommend instead. And so as far as, from the situation, the San Diego originally presented this grant of easement, which contains significant contractual language and the preferences is very similar to what we have now. We have a standalone operations agreement, from the operations agreement stems a grant of easement. We, we strike all the contractual language. But anyhow, in saying that, that, that's, you know, part of the negotiations, we have to have, that we're, we're reviewing right now and actually marking up that kind of contract. But I will try and get that to you probably by the end of the month. Those, the, the goals as far as, I wanted to do two things. One is give you the presentation, the overall strategic plan presentation, because that includes everything, the mission, vision, values, and the goals. And then I believe there was a separate one where we'd gotten to the goals. And I pulled up today electronically the goals that were received from the various departments and, but then there was also a survey of goals. So I want to compile all that and give me a couple of weeks and I can get that out to you all.
I may just see the ones from our departments and see what they envision. Okay, the second thing I'd like to talk about is, I understand we're going to have a finance committee meeting next Wednesday.
Wednesday, six.
At six. I'd like us to look at this and I, I think we have a city manager who is doing the work of public works, of city manager and when needed, community development. I think we are asking way too much of our city manager. He cannot do everything, he is one person and I think he suffers, the city suffers, the community suffers because we are so short-sighted that we say we don't have enough money to look at other, other people. I think we need to, we must, we must look at that. And I would like the finance committee to look at that. I do not think that you're doing a, a job that, that can be expected to be done as well as you would do it if you had one job. And I don't fault that, I recognize the, the constraints, but I think we are not being wise with our, with our finances here to say, can we do better? Can we do more? I know when I spoke to you about this not long ago, you said, we don't have enough money. I think we don't have enough money not to do it. At least look at it, come back and tell us what you think. I don't fault your work, I'm simply saying you're human and it's as simple as that. The other thing I would like to do is talk about the casino. I know this is a bad time to bring this up, but I, I would like us to look at this opportunity. Put the casino down by Highway 395. Annex some property down China Lake Boulevard. I looked, I envisioned it as a hammerhead shark where you would go down as far as picking up the railhead and, and having the opportunities to grow there. I know when I first brought this up a year and a half ago, everybody went crazy because they thought I wanted to annex everything. Well, I did. I mean, I'm honest, I said from Brady to County Line Road. Okay, so we can't serve all that, we can't make promises, but I think if we look at putting the casino out by Highway 395, Dennis and I spoke to BLM about the possibility of annexing this kind of property a year and a half ago. And, and he said, I want to, I think that's a good idea, let's look at it, but it's going to have to go to Barstow. And if we look at it from Barstow, and then one of the things he said, I want you to put up a, a visitor's center out there. Well, knowing full well that in 25 years or so, Caltrans is going to have a, a intersection there that may be much greater than we see today, let's look at that. I want to see the property, when we have that kind of growth out along 395, the county is not, not against it because they will benefit on the other side of 395. That kind of growth will be good for everybody out there, the county will get that. Sales tax and property tax and that kind of thing. When we start growing there, then we have the ability to grow north on China Lake Boulevard back to the city and the city will have the ability to grow south on China Lake Boulevard to meet that kind of growth. It gets the casino out of where it's been proposed. I know the city is not going to get their money if we don't sell that property to them, but I want to look at that. We've seen, we've looked at a number of places. I want us to examine this more fully with Lafco. I have talked to the two county representatives on Lafco and they say, bring us a plan, we're, we, we want to see it. Bring us a plan and see if we can make it happen. We need to look at the impacts on the casino and I don't want to, I don't want to step on anybody's toes or make the life difficult for everybody, but I think getting the casino out of that area in the business park. I do know when I, when somebody came to me the other day and said, this is the golden triangle here, this is the, our, our beautiful piece of property and you're going to put casino up there. And I said, well, it isn't like there's been a thousand people trying to put something up there. And so I asked Mr. Parsons, they understood that the only thing that could be put there was office facilities. Well, let's look at what can really go there because Mr. Parsons told me there's other things that can go there. Let's look at developing that in a way that benefits both the community and, and, and doesn't impact as greatly as a casino has been purported to potentially impact the, the schools and the, and the churches that are there. I'm not saying that's the only place it can go, but I want us to look at that and give it a really good concerted effort because it seems to me a smart way to look at it.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I could interject, it would be a good idea to have that as a discussion item so that we can have everybody, you know.
I agree.
Uniformly give staff direction on, on what to do with that.
I agree. If you want to do it that way rather than go to a committee, that's fine.
Or, or a committee too.
I don't care how it does, I just want us to look at it.
Yeah, because, so maybe next, next agenda or next meeting, if, I'm not sure what's going on, but.
I don't know if we'll have enough, enough information to be able to give good, solid information, but at least concepts.
We need to give staff direction.
I agree.
Then I don't want to talk about necessarily locations, just what's the general will of the council so staff can move forward and, and charge forward on those things.
Okay, those are mine. Sir?
Real quick, I just wanted to, wanted to thank Mr. Lamoot and our chief for stepping up and offering some, whatever kind of services they can to the people that are at the Rose Garden Inn. Most of those, a lot of those people, I see every, every Sunday and I hear their concerns and their place of disgruntled abilities or lack thereof. So, I don't know how I can help or what I can do, but I, I would love to continue to be a part of that. If there is a process, I would love to continue to be a part of that process of hopefully finding something for those people. Because I know Richcrest is an outstanding place and we're good people and we can, we can hopefully find something for them so they're not in the street. And we can reach out and help the people in Isabella and we think we've done an outstanding job as a community. Here's an opportunity for our people in our community that we can do something for them as well. So, that's, that's really all I had. I just wanted to thank our staff, our attorney and our, our chief of police for that, so.
Well, I've got to say, it's a lot nicer attending the meeting in person than on phone. My daughter thought it was silly to post her front door with the agenda for this meeting back in Omaha, or just outside of Omaha. In three and a half weeks, I covered a lot of territory. I want you to know that every one of them was cooler than Richcrest. Except Omaha was only 97 degrees, but I think the heat index was above Richcrest because it was very heavy. But I went through Colorado, it was 52 degrees and raining in the middle of the day. I thought I'd move to Colorado. Anyway, I'm glad to be back, I don't plan on going anywhere for a while, so.
Okay.
Anyway. Thank you.
Okay. Then a motion to adjourn if there's no other. I think we can do that. We adjourn, we're done.
We're the mayor adjourned.